All right.
Good evening, folks. Welcome to this special meeting and study session taking place on November the 10th, 2025 here at the Blue Lion. This meeting was unanimously called by the Board of Directors at the November 4th, 2025 regular meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the room?
Directors Rego?
Here.
Good.
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
George Getzabas?
Here.
Christina Getzabas?
Here.
Settle?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum and just two things very quickly that we wanted to acknowledge and speak about. Number one, I know I speak for all of my colleagues here and everybody at the city in leadership and with on the team in expressing our profound gratitude for all the veterans who have served our community. And we acknowledge the importance of Veterans Day tomorrow and appreciate folks changing their schedules to be with us here Monday night so we could have that holiday to honor the folks tomorrow. But just thank you, thank you, thank you to our veterans in the community and across the nation and across the world. And we also want to extend our congratulations to our new Fire Chief, Darryl Clark. He's a 27-year veteran of the department, and I believe his first day was today. So congratulations, Chief Clark. Does any member of the board have a presentation of an item of business not already on the agenda for the special meeting? Okay, seeing none. Item one is a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for the purchase of radio infrastructure, equipment, and installation services for the River Valley Communications Center construction project. This is a $5.3 million budgeted project out of emergency 911 funds and was tabled to this special meeting called the November 4th, 2025 regular meeting. Whom do we have to present on this item? Mr. Dingman?
Director Public Safety Communications, Wes Mylan, will address this item and answer questions to the board.
Dr. Mylan, do you have any introductory comments for us?
Is it on?
Okay.
Good evening, Board.
Just bring it closer.
All right. Good evening, Board. As we discussed last week, this is the first of the first capital purchase involving the consolidation of the River Valley Communications Center. As I mentioned in the memo, after the, in 2024, the Arkansas, excuse me, in 2019, the Arkansas Public Safety Act of 2019 was created, and this created the need for to consolidate. So I said last week, this is going to bring the number of PSAPs in Arkansas down to 77. And Sebastian County was one of the counties to bring from two PSAPs to one. The plan then was submitted to the state, and in late 2024, the interlocal agreement between City of Fort Smith and Sebastian County was created, and this created the River Valley Communication Center Governing Board. And in January, the board began to meet on a monthly basis. With this organization of the consolidated PSAP, the state was able to give us a 24-month extension to January of 2027 in which to become consolidated. Starting in January, the Governing Board of the River Valley Communications Center, RVCC, began working on multiple items in which to consolidate. One of those items in which I'm bringing for you today is going to be the actual location of the facility. The board selected 4501 Borough Road, which is the old Ho-Haw building, in order to be the location for the River Valley Communications Center. From that point, all efforts were beginning to put the facility there. After the board had selected that facility, we then began designing the facility. I took over in June of this year as the Executive Director of the RVCC, which was the second priority of the board, and took over what was being already taken under creation, basically, in order to get us to that spot. And when I took that place, I began moving forward with that location. We've went through floor plans, we went through designs for the actual facility itself. And one of the main issues that we wanted to make sure we did is it is a hardened facility. 911, that is a crucial aspect, as you're aware, of public safety, and we wanted to be able to have that hardened facility so that in the event of a tornado, essentially, that we would still have our communications center up and running. And that was the purpose of the hardened facility aspect. From that end, the second portion of that is this radio infrastructure that I bring to you tonight. We currently in Fort Smith and Sebastian County, we have 14 total consoles in use. They have been in use since 2005, they're 20 years old, and we are looking to replace those. They're consoles, okay. In a 911 center, you have a call-taking or dispatch position or a console. When you look in the dispatch center, you sit and you've got the six monitors, right? It's just your workspace, and your console is one-third of that. That is your radio console. All right? So when I say console, that's we have 14 right now involving public safety, 21 total in the city, and that includes other departments in the city that use this radio system. But for public safety, we have 14 total. We have seven at the Police Department, three at Sebastian County Sheriff's Office, and four at the EOC, Emergency Operations Center. With a hardened facility, the need for the backup was reduced, so we didn't move forward with those four. We are only going to replace 10. The 16 consoles were being created or built for the future. We're looking to grow, we're looking to possible possibility to be a regional facility 10, 15, 20 years down the road. When I was creating and working on these floor plans, one of the things that I wanted to do is to look to the future, right? And so that's where that came from. 4501 Borough Road location, where it is at, we would need to have dual-wire line microwave connection in order to get on the AWIN system. And in that AWIN system,
that tower has got microwave on it that's going to go to South Sebastian County Tower Site in Wichitaville, and then north to the Crow Hill. And that gave us redundancy with our radio coverage throughout the county. So briefly, that's what I brought before you. We have, since that time, as we mentioned, this is not the only option, this is the first option. We have other things to look at that we can do. We can look at other locations, either temporary or permanent. I believe we talked about, instead of Borough Road, there are other locations we can do temporarily. But the idea is, is no matter where we go, we're going to have to have new radios, and that is what this purchase is for. We were able to talk to Motorola in this week about those incentives. When I brought this to you, I was trying to stay ahead of those incentives. And since talking with that, we were able to get a month extension. They are going to give us to December the 19th on that extension. So that gives the ability, should you decide for that to occur, I can then go and explore some of the options more fully to determine if anything is that needed. So that said.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. Madam Clerk, did any citizens sign up to speak on this item?
Yes, for item one, we have Crystal Cadelli.
All right. Two minutes, correct?
Good evening. My question is more towards the building, other than the Motorola portion of the project. So my question would be, did we send out formal bids to remodel that building, or was it just awarded?
We haven't done either yet. We have hired a construction manager who will work through the design process with the architect, and they will develop specifications that will be put out for bid.
Okay, so does the architect not provide specs for the bidding process? I just don't understand the need for a contract manager.
They, it's a construction manager, and so the, we have, the architect going through the design, the construction manager gets involved before the design gets finished so they can advise us to constructibility and such. We've used this process several times. The first major project was Fire Station 11, most recently was with the Creekmore Park Bath House, in terms of using a construction manager at-risk delivery method. That is a professional service, and so we've, 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 within the last year, I forget which month, but within the last six months or so, we approved agreement with Beshear's Construction to serve as our construction manager on this project. They work with the design team, the architect, to develop the specifications for the building, for all of the different components for subcontracting, and they put that out for bid. And then that's when our competitive bidding will take place.
So you, so it has not been awarded to Beshear's for $5 million. They're just working with the architect?
They are the construction manager, and there's typically a construction manager fee involved in that. And then they develop the specifications for all of the subcontractor work and all of those components are bid out.
And the reason for these questions is because this is the industry that I grew up in. My dad was a commercial general contractor, and typically the architecture firm provided the specs for the general contractors to do formal bidding process. So I just want to make sure that we're being conscious of our money and that we're doing a formal bidding process to get the best cost that is out there.
Yes, and we will.
Thank you.
Any other citizens for item one?
No, that's all indicating.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt item one?
Still moved.
And I'll second, so we can have the discussion in order. And I believe Director Christina Getzabas wanted to make the first comments.
Well, I'm glad to hear you say that there are other options. I feel like this was presented to us as the only option. So I read the law, and I feel like we're going far beyond what is required. You know, I went through, I read the minutes from the last committee meeting that, that you guys had, and it appears to me the financial structure places all the long-term risk on the city and not the county. Why is the county not party to the Motorola lease? Because if we sign on, we're on the hook for it, all of it.
That's correct. And the 911 Governing Board has consisted of many, has got nine board members from both the city and the county. And when we presented this to the 911 Board, they have to approve it before I bring it before you. The reason it is within the city of Fort Smith is that we are the managers of this, the fund, where it used to be the county that was managing the fund. Now, the city is setting up and running this.
But the fund doesn't cover the lease requirements completely?
It does, it, over the next few years, the total cost of it, in order to put it, to reduce the amount, we put it over five years. And what comes to the city is that any operating cost over the state turnback funds. We get about $1.8 million a year from the state. The operating costs above and beyond that then get split up between the city and the county for 70% and 30% as it relates to population. And the agreement that was signed, the interlocal agreement, was that the city would pay for 70% of those fees or the costs, and the county will pay 30% of those costs. And so while you, as a board, are approving this purchase, because ultimately the costs are going to come from the city of Fort Smith, we will pay that. But the cost is going to be shared between the city and county every year with a look at the operating cost over the revenue.
Well, I know the county's already said they can't afford it. And, you know, when I read the law, the consolidation law never envisioned a financing model where the city's taxpayers hold 100% of the long-term debt while the county pays none of the capital liability but receives 30% of the service. To me, this is a negotiation failure, not a statutory requirement. You know, when I look at what it does require, and I made a list, it requires a single consolidated dispatch center, ensuring call-takers are adequately equipped, a governing board structure, which we've got, compliance and operational standards. You know, I worry we're far exceeding what's required because we're building a new facility that's not required. We're not required to build to a FEMA hardened standard. We're not required to purchase brand-new radios for every agency or join a lease with Motorola or any vendor specifically. We're not required to spend $5 million on a building, and then I'm hearing the tower could be $3 million on top of that.
No, no, the tower is within the Motorola agreement. This, the Motorola agreement is turnkey. It's a tower, concrete, grounding, server equipment, installation, and the radios for the dispatch center alone. This isn't, this isn't for all of the other, okay?
If we were to stay within the Police Department where they've got a tower now, could we not consolidate there and not have that extra expense?
We could do that, as long as it's on a temporary basis. Right now, there are only six, eight stations in Fort Smith at the Police Department, okay? To consolidate, I've got a minimum of four that need to be on duty that I have at the Police Department. Sebastian County has two, Fort Smith EMS has two. We're bringing in that additional responsibility of police, fire, and EMS. And because of that, we're also bringing in all of the employees from the county. Rather than having employees at the city, employees at the county, and Fort Smith EMS, it's all going to be one spot. I got to have a place to put them. Can we do it at the Police Department?
Sure.
It's going to be a tight fit. We can look at some construction costs at the Police Department to refurbish in order to do that, but it's still going to be a tight fit. That's one option, is to do it that way.
And I do think that's an option we should pursue, you know, tearing out a few walls, you know, adding some cubicles, things like that. It's going to be a lot cheaper than over $5 million.
Despite that, okay, to refurbish at the Police Department, we will still need the new radios, because the radios that we have there are 20 years old. They are no longer in service. A question was asked, well, what if we take the old radios and move them to a new location? We might, but they don't have service.
So we don't have working equipment now?
We do, but it's, it's 10 years too, too long. They've been wanting to replace, we've been talking about replacing them for 10 years. And then as we get into the consolidation aspect, you know, this is going to replace, it's going to bring the radios to one spot, which means Sebastian County's radios were no longer needed. The Emergency Operations Center is no longer needed.
I worry this wasn't adequately budgeted for. I'm wondering, could we get another year? Could we get two years and take the time and care to adequately budget for updated equipment? But I'll yield my time. I'd like to hear the thoughts from the rest of the board. You know, I know I talked with Jeff a little bit about, you know, where these things fall in the budget, and I understand, you know, now for us, it's 1112, which was replacing 47080101. It's gone from budgeting in '25 for $2,51,326 to $4,329,000. It's more than doubled for those line items. We've got to be mindful here of our spending, but I'll yield my time to the rest of the board. Thank you.
Director Mark, well, Mr. Dingman first?
No, I might say just to that point that Director Getzabas just made is that in terms of, in previous years, all of the state turnback money went to Sebastian County. And so all the operating expenses of the E91 function fell to Sebastian County. And so with our revised interlocal agreement that was approved by both entities in December of 2024, everyone agreed that the responsibility of that should shift to the city of Fort Smith, and the city would then start taking on the, getting the turnback funds from the state, and then dispensing them to reimburse, to, as, for 2026, we aren't consolidated yet, and so
The turnback funds are 1.8?
Yes. Per year.
Per year. And so, I mean, even without the Motorola lease or without the building construction, we're $2.27 million over. I mean, even if we, we take out 1.8, that's not even including building construction, a million dollars for the Motorola lease, and the additional personnel.
Right. And just, and just in talking on the operations side, without the, without the Motorola projects and without the building project, just on, just in taking on the operations, that increases our overall, overall spending because we then are responsible for then reimbursing the county as, as they used to reimburse us. That's reversed. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of changes here that are just on the operational side, in addition to the considerations that are, that we're looking at here for the capital costs of the radios and then the building. And, you know, both of those separately, I mean, those are significant costs. But I think even as options exist, as Wes mentioned about possibility of, in the, in the Police Department building, well, at least temporarily, until, until the consolidated function happens, with all the personnel need to start co-locating, and we need to be able to expand that. Well, we have looked at another option also, a little bit, I'd say, I'd say we've looked at it, we've talked about it, more than looked at it, the basement area of the Cornell Building, the old, the old library. We currently have a call center in there that is moving to the City Hall. We currently have a couple of other employees office in there which are also moving to City Hall. That space in there would likely be sized, sized enough to accommodate a longer solution. And it would be a hardened, and it's a, and it's a pretty hard facility, especially in the basement area.
Right. Because we're budgeting $255,199.94 for interest expense. Is that for the construction on the Borough Road building?
That would be, yes. And that would be in terms of a long-term financing for, for the financing, the $5 million over, I think, a 20-year, 20-year term.
20-year term. Director Mark?
So I think the original ask of this was that we would go to a study session, so we would have some conversations really outside of this Motorola solution. So that's kind of why you're getting, getting questions that aren't related to this. But, so this is a $5.3 million contract.
Yes.
If I remember when we talked last week, well, I'll ask, I'll ask it again. How much money is in the turnback fund today? Like, yeah, how much, how much is in the turnback money, the turnback fund today?
So we received in 2025 the initial transfer of the 911 fund from the county.
Okay, so the first time we've, we've gotten anything is in 2025?
No, that's, well,
Okay.
We got, the county sent us the money they had already received in previous years. They had accumulated a sizable, nearly $4 million.
A little over.
We got 1.9 million the county sent to us. There is still another 1.3-ish million that we're expecting to receive either late this year or early next year. That is from, that is from these turnback monies that have already been received by the county. They're going to send that to us since we will now be operating the fund.
Could you give me those numbers again?
The original portion was about 4.2 million.
Wes, please speak into your microphone.
Original?
The original, the original amount was about 4.2 million in the 911 fund for the county. That's going to transfer to us.
From the county?
Correct.
Okay. And then?
I'm sorry, you said 4.2?
Yes.
4.2. Okay. And then we get 1.8 every year?
That's correct.
So we'll get 1.8 yearly?
And this, this fourth quarter of 2025, I think, is when we expect to get our first, because it gets paid quarterly. So we directed the state in July to start making those payments to the city, and we'll, we'll get the first quarter in 20, this last quarter, 25.
We're expecting another payment of $426,000.
And when?
This year.
This year, okay. So, so we have 4.2 million, we'll get another, whatever, what, what number you just said for, and we'll have it in 25, so it'll be north of $4.5 million. That's, that's what's sitting there. And so the ask here is 5.3 million. So we're going to, we're going to have a deficit there.
Correct.
Right? So that's coming out of the general fund, is that correct?
It's technically coming out of the E911 fund. However, our general fund and the county's general fund will have obligation to the E911 fund each year. And so we will have, and I, I don't, I can't think of what that, that, we have a projection for '26, what that number is.
So
Technically, it gets paid from the E911 fund.
Yeah, in '26, the general fund is not going to pay anything.
What about in '25?
Again.
I mean, right, right, I mean, we've got
All we've done in '25.
4.5. We're getting ready to be asked to put 5.3, pay 5.3. There's a gap there, so that money's got to come from somewhere. Yeah, for this Motorola. Well, I'm not there yet. I'm getting there, I'm getting there. So, so where's the, where's the difference, 4.5 to 5.3 coming from?
We're proposing a finance, a five-year financing for the Motorola project. So it is a $1 million payment per year, which starts in February of 2027.
So that kind of, that, that, we don't deplete it all at once. We paid out of time.
That's correct.
Okay. So, so at some point, we'll, we'll amortize that out, and we'll, we'll pay out. When we'll come to this thing where we're paying 5, 5.3, we've got 4.5, so we're going to have to pay some somewhere. So that'll, that'll come out of the general fund, I would assume, at that point, whenever, whenever we need to realize it, it'll come out of the general fund. How much are we, and I think Director Kat Savis just said it, if we get 1.8 million yearly, how much are we paying for the center yearly? What are we budgeting for? Is that 4.3? Well, I'm, I'm, I'm on operations now, 4.3. Okay. Well, and I'm glad you said, I'm glad you said capital, because the hardening of the building is, I mean, did, did we get, I haven't, I haven't looked through this yet, but the hardening of the building, what are we estimating that to be?
We don't have that estimate yet. The hardening of the building is, is within the design of the facility coming from the architect.
Right.
It's going to be about $5 million.
Yeah, we estimated.
It's going to be $5.5 million?
It's going to be about $5 million. But that's, that's the, that's the number that we'll get to the guaranteed maximum price the construction manager will, will provide to us earlier than the year next year.
I believe it was in the agenda packet for the RVCC meetings, a little over 5.5.
So where does that come from?
That is the, that is the question. In terms of the, the $5 million for the, for the building itself is what we're contemplating a 20-year financing. And we're able to use the 1.8 million turnback funds from the E911 fund as dedicated revenue source to authorize the 20-year term of financing of the building.
Okay, I get it, I get it, I get it. Yeah. How much do we fund, how much do we budget for our 911 today? And I haven't, I haven't looked at our
Okay, in 2025, the budget was right around 2 million, and it was coming out, there it is.
2 million.
I'm sorry, you spoke Speaking to your microphone.
I'm sorry, it, it was a little over, around, it's a little over $2 million, because last year, or this year, 2025, it was budgeted to the Police Department.
And then it'll be 4.3?
Correct.
Ongoing?
Yes. And you've got to keep in mind that we are now assuming the expenses that the county used to pay
Right.
for 911 in, in this county.
Not to, not to, I'm not making a joke here.
Please.
But they're getting everything. County's getting 911, but not paying for it. I mean, they, they have to put in, they have to put in. But it seems like the risk is, is all on us. More risk on us than, than it was prior. I'm just FYI. So, so if we, if we are going from 2 million to 4.3 million, we've got 2.3 million there, we're financing the building for 1.8, or, or I don't know what, how much we would finance the building each year if we amortized it out for 20 years. What would that amount be?
It's about 450.
450? 450?
Well, 400, it's about 410,000.
410?
Yep.
So
Because we're paying $255,000 in interest a year, so what would be budgeting for that?
450. So we're still? No? If I get math.
So we've got the building expense, the operational expense, and then the expense of the Motorola lease?
Yes. Yeah, I, I think what, what I was really looking for as part of a study session is to see all these dollars, not me mathing it out here on my calculator with 30 people watching me. And TV audience, right. But being able to see this stuff on a, on a spreadsheet, this is what we're looking at, this is what we're looking at. Because in reality, we can't go without 911. I mean, I'm not arguing against that, but what I'm saying is, what's that going to do to me or the board after I'm gone? What's that going to do to them? What's that going to do to them? And what's that going to do to the remainder of the general fund at that time? So, I've got to be, I need to see that, I have to see that. Not to say I'm going to vote against it, but I got to see it.
Well, and that's, and that's what I was saying, that extension gives us time to do that, so.
So, the, but the extension is a, the extension is just on this for a month, right?
Yes, it is, yes. But we could come back and say, all right, well, what can we do otherwise? I said 10 radios, and then I've got the 16 matching, it's called consollette, it's the back room site.
Yeah.
That I did for 20 years from now.
Yeah.
Well, if we back that off, what, I can back that down to 10 consollettes.
Well, I think, yeah, I think we got to look at that, because in order to make the, in order to make this decision, I mean, we're making, we're making a short-term decision, but it's really got long-term consequences.
Sure.
So, and, and consequence is not necessarily a bad thing, but we got to be able to see what that looks like as we're going, we're going down the road.
See, and another option, I mean, we, me and Andy were talking about it as well, another, another option that we have is rather than the Motorola finance, we find our own financing.
Right.
And, you know, the, the cost of the equipment before the financing was 4.6 million. And so, we could come back and look at alternative ways for that amount to get us to that consolidation.
But would we need to finance if we're not spending so much on the building? If we were going into Cornell, could we not use that 1.8 towards the Motorola lease?
We certainly could.
We wouldn't need financing.
Right.
I mean, because if you read through the law, and I read through the law, and the spirit of the law is consolidation for the costs, for cost savings, you know, what, what they're looking for is, I mean, what, what they're looking for is a single consolidated dispatch center, ensuring call takers are adequately equipped, a governing board structure, compliance with operational standards, I mean, pretty basic standard stuff.
Director Kemp and then Director Settle.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think we're putting the cart before the horse here, and I, I see that, and I see us all spinning our numbers here. I mean, I hear, I hear us workshopping locations, and what we're all, I think, feeling is the law of unintended consequences. You know, if we buy this Motorola agreement, and then, but it's, well, we did it because it was with this building, but now we're not going to be in that building, we'll be in this building. I personally would prefer to see us consolidate, not at the police department, but at the Cornell Building, because it has the adequate space, and not set up and bring more consternation by putting it in a temporary place. I am wondering, I mean, hypothetically, we go to the Cornell Building, we take existing equipment, which I hear is dated, and I'm for all upgrading the equipment, but if, could we set it up where it would still function like it does today at the Cornell Building? That's one question I have. I understand we want to get new equipment in the future, I'm totally for that, but if I was to say, right now, could we go to Cornell, say, taking existing equipment, is that doable?
I would have, I would have to find out for sure, because we're, the equipment that we have, we're going to be bringing on extra workload.
And you don't want to keep moving from this building to this building to this building?
Right.
But I mean, if you were going straight to it.
And what I mean is, 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 you know, can our equipment handle that influx of workload?
Sure.
So?
Find out.
Could I find out for you, Director? I would love to do that.
I'd love to know the answer to that. I also would love to know, I know they're basing this on population, but do we have an idea of how many calls county brings in versus how many calls city brings in?
Absolutely.
And is that truly a 70/30 split? I have a feeling it's not.
It is not.
Okay, there you go. So, now, so I'm sitting here thinking through, I'm like, this, I'm just a good old boy here in so many ways tonight. I'm looking at it and I'm thinking, we're just not, it's not mathing. And we can sit here and run numbers, but was the building bought, the old whole hog building, was that bought with E911 funds?
No.
No, it was not.
Okay.
Jeep Baker could probably, Jeff could probably do that.
So, potentially.
We bought that for a police precinct at the time.
Okay.
And we could sell it.
I was going to say, that was exactly what I was going to suggest, is could we go ahead and potentially sell that? That's a pretty good piece of property. I have a feeling that would bring a good return, maybe just enough to buy radio equipment. That's just a thought in my head as we're thinking through this. I think the other thought, and I just want to voice it, because I think where I'm feeling this is I have a budget hearing, and we need to balance a budget on the general fund, and I'm hearing, you know, we didn't get there, you know, in one year, we won't maybe get out of there in one year. That's not an acceptable answer. We can't spend money we don't have. So, when we talk about this, I'm thinking about police officers, I'm thinking about firefighters, I'm thinking about those things, and when we talk about this, bringing a significant amount of money and increase to the general fund, these are the things that I think we need to see the entire picture. Count the cost is what, the Lord that I follow told me to count all my cost, and consider whether I could, where I could do that before I get started. That principle, I think, sticks here. We need to know the total, total picture before I can understand how I can vote. Thank you.
Director Settle and then Director Good.
Thank you. When you hear the word consolidation, you think, things are going to be consolidated, get a little bit lower cost. So, this microphone, actually hate this spot here. All the other 911 centers, they seeing a rise and increase like we're seeing ours when we consolidate? If I called Washington County, Benton County, Pulaski County?
Washington County, when they consolidated, they built a new facility.
But, I mean, but are they seeing the year, their ongoing cost double like we're seeing with us?
I don't know that answer, sir.
I, I'd like to know that, because.
Sure.
Because I, I think the state law was intended to consolidate to keep the service good, but reduce the overall costs. And I think this is different. You know, when I leave 70/30, I go back to what we get from the countywide sales tax. I think we get 64, 64% instead of 70. So, why is it 70/30? If it's based on population, why isn't, then the, either we get more on the countywide sales tax, or we get less hit here. That's where I'm at. Because the countywide sales tax is 64%, if I remember, what we get back from it.
Was the 70/30 already agreed to in the inter-local agreement? So, that's already been agreed to?
Yes.
Yeah, that's. I, I guess where I'm going back with everybody else is if we decide to go with Cornell, can we use the existing tower? And can we put new equipment on that tower?
I don't know that, I'll have to find out.
I, I think those questions should be answered, and, and the other thing is, I'm glad that the Motorola would extend another month, but I think if you go back to them and says, we need some more time, they'll probably extend it probably a couple of months. If they truly want the business, they'll probably extend it four or five months without a problem.
Mm-hmm.
So, if, if there's a motion to be made here, I'd like to motion to table this, administration and Dr. Mylan.
I'll second that.
But, everybody gets their questions, quit done.
I think Director Good wanted to weigh in.
Yeah, just, just to weigh in, I do want to say that I agree with a statement that Director Kemp said about seeing the whole picture. I think that, you know, like a lot of other projects, you know, looking at this, you know, when we started talking about the 911 center, we were hopeful about our tax, tax revenues, and another funding source that we applied, four or $5 million that we didn't get. So, we were hopeful, but, you know, neither one of those things panned out for us. So, I'm not opposed at all about trying to outfit Cornell, Cornell Building. You know, I'd like to know, I'd like to know what that, what that cost looked like. Also have a question about the equipment. So, I understand the equipment is outdated, and I definitely get wanting new equipment. So, I think Director Martin might have asked, does, do the equipments from the EMS and county and the city, will all that work together?
Not with EMS. Sebastian County and Fort Smith are on the same wire line equipment, I think Ethernet cable, wire lines. Ethernet cable for wire line. Sebastian County and Fort Smith are on that type of system. Fort Smith EMS is just essentially using a, a mobile radio that is have to be patched in in order to, to work. So, that's something that we would have to, to see what, like I said, what would be within using that equipment between Sebastian County and Fort Smith. But also keep in mind, if we're going to use that equipment. We have got to pare down that equipment in order to move them, because we are constantly using these radios 24/7. So, if we, we want to take the radios we have now and put them in a new spot, then we have to go out then, okay, well, we reduce our work, our radios by 50% to then take them down, move them, set them up, test them, re-energize them, and then we're still at 50% until we move the, the other 50 back over.
Okay.
Okay?
So, with this consolidation, the equipment itself, will all of the operators, the dispatchers be able to work on, is the equipment the same? Will, will they be able to work on all of it?
Yes.
Okay, the reason I'm asking, you know, FedEx, we just did our reorganization, and yeah, it's, the math isn't mathing, a lot of it's not meshing. So, but the other thing I want, I wanted to say is, you know, when we're talking about all these expenses and revenues, and what I haven't seen is what a forecast looked like, you know, for the revenues that could possibly come in, and the expenses for, you know, '26, '27, you know, '28. I do understand that we've got the 1.8 million dollars coming in, that's not until 2007, but 20, '27, right? So, getting a forecast on what that might look like, the 911 revenues compared to the expenses?
The, the fees that we get from the Arkansas State 911 Board are fees that are on your wireless cell phone bills for 911 services. They, from 2019 to 2020, they doubled those fees in anticipation of this consolidation process. In 2019, we got a little over $560,000 in Sebastian County that was used. It has now jumped to, it was a little over 2 million in 2020, but the way it was explained to me is that two, that in 2020, that overage was the backlog from the state switching those fees. It's now come down to about 1.7, 1.8. That is calculated based on all of the wireless fees that the, the state of Arkansas gets, and then divides it by population. So, that's divided Sebastian County's percentage of the whole population of the state is where that cost come from. So, in forecasting out, what, what does that revenue look like? Well, the revenue we have now is based on the 2020 census. At the 2030 census, if the population of Sebastian County has increased, then too, would the revenue increase?
Okay, it's based on population. Thank you.
I might say also that, you know, the, the $5.3 million that we're talking about and the incentives that Wes has mentioned, those are based on a configuration and a proposal of radios and a system, equipment that would go into the Borough Road property. If, I mean, there's no, there's no magic to that other than taking advantage of those incentives now before the end of the year. But however, if we, if we backed up this project and we said, we're going to look at a different facility, the Cornell property for, as an example, we're going to look at that facility, let's figure out the best radio system for that. It likely would come in at a different number, a slightly different configuration, using, you know, trying to achieve the same things that we're trying to with this particular project if it were happening in Borough Road. But if we shifted that course and focused on a different facility, that $5.3 million number would likely be quite a bit different, especially, especially, well, I would think it would be different. And so, I mean, that, that, just, just making a decision here, that's kind of why we put this special meeting together, was because of the timing of the incentives on that cost. But if that's not the configuration we need anyway, or at least we want to look at a different option for that, then it probably makes sense to let this go. Motorola still wants to sell us the system. They will work for, with us to configure an appropriate, appropriately sized system that would fit into whatever building we ultimately go in.
George Kat Savis?
What's concerning to me is that this Motorola, Motorola contract, it came to us in a consent agenda. If we had passed this last week, we would have effectively been locked into the Borough Road location. You know, I don't understand why we weren't presented with an alternative location or several options initially. I mean, we're budgeting, in our budget book, we're budgeting $255,000 for interest expense. And if you look, software licensing fees, $323,000, computer equipment, $75,000, computer equipment, software maintenance, $380,000, other, $496,000. That gets us to 4.3 million. We should have been presented with multiple options before we were effectively locked in to a Motorola contract, which effectively locks us into Borough Road. I would like to see us sell Borough Road, put that money back in the general fund, and utilize an existing building that we've got. Thank you.
Director Good.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. So, in, in reading the resolution, would we really be locked in if we accepted the Motorola bid? Would we be locked in on the Borough Road location? Because that's, I, I didn't understand, I don't believe that's the case, maybe I'm misunderstanding. This is just, we're talking about the Motorola itself, the, the equipment.
I think it's the equipment needs specific to that location.
But we're gonna, but we're gonna look at doing the equipment anyway, and again, my, my thought, my thought process is, if we're dealing with Motorola, they're going to work with us, you know, they will give us, you know, hopefully, you know, what we need and, and not what, you know, not more than what we need, but, you know, we're invested in the future as well, so we know what we're gonna need, and we're talking about Cornell being a temporary location, so that's saying that we are going to have to adjust equipment-wise for the employees and space needed.
Director Christina Kat Savis and Director Martin.
So, if we look at this as presented, we've got 5.3 million with Motorola, we've got 5.5 million Borough Road outfitting it, bringing it up to speed. We've got 4.3 million in operation, so, you know, if you utilize the information we have, we have a pretty clear financial picture of what the Borough Road location is going to look like.
So, my, my thought here is, yeah, it looks like, going back and kind of looking through this, a lot of the communication came via email over the course of the last couple of years, and this, this, a study session where we talk about this and look at this and iron out those costs that Director Kat Savis just said, I think that's the, that's the prudent way of, of moving forward with these types of things. So, in the future, I think that's what we do. It's not necessarily on you, Jeff, that was a, that was a prior administration that, that was communicating via email, but I think we got to make sure that we understand the, the cost going in, as Director Kemp said. So, let's, so what, what's, what's our, what's our next steps from here? What are we, what are we going to do? We're gonna, we're gonna put together costs, what we know, like what Director Christina Kat Savis just made mention of. We'll also have some alternatives associated with that.
Yes.
So, I mean, I want to see the total cost associated, you got some alternatives of how we, how we can fund this thing. So, we definitely want to see that. What else do we have that we've got to?
I want to see how other consolidation groups, have they seen a rise in cost or lower cost?
Okay, because this is a rise in cost, appears to be a rise in cost.
Every county, every 911 center went up, I think, then, then the state has got an issue they didn't really realize.
I want to know how many calls are really coming in from the city of Fort Smith versus outside the city of Fort Smith.
I think if we look at the situation moving forward, no matter where we settle and how we upgrade equipment, either all at once, piecemeal as it fails, because the situation as it exists currently, if I understand it, is that equipment is functioning, but when and if equipment of that age ceases to function, there's not a replaceability of that same equipment, you'd have to upgrade at that point for support, software, et cetera. And so, I understand it correctly that based on the projections around the turnback funds, we're talking about somewhere on an annual basis of between $1.5 million and $2 million that we would expect to come to us, correct?
Correct.
You know, that I think that's a number worth keeping in mind, not just for the short term, but the medium term and moving forward, that, hey, this is the amount that we can reasonably expect, maybe a little higher if you have population growth or things like that. This is kind of the target we need to aim for when it comes to operating the 911 service, not habitually, structurally, a number that's higher than what we would reasonably expect to, to come in as sort of the operating funds for this. Director Settle, did you want to make a motion? Or Director Good, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, you know, Director Martin made a comment about the emails that we've received and not having a study session. You know, just want to remind folks, you know, we've been waiting and, and to, to get some information, not that it was getting late, we were waiting as a city to get information. some information, um, not that it was getting late, we were waiting as a city to get information. I remember, um, Police Chief Baker talking about, you know, the other entities we had to work with, the state, the county EMS, and, you know, some of the meetings, you know, things weren't being, well, a lot of moving parts, a lot of things going on, a lot of negotiation that had to take place. So during this whole time, I believe Chief Baker was diligently working on how to get us here where we are now, so.
I, I, I guess just rather than having a, an item come to us and vote on, which is a big part of the, the dollars, at that point, once we got it, let's sit down and let's, let's go through it and let's, let's talk it through. So us citizens, everybody's aware of what the, what the cost is.
Director Selt?
I was gonna make a motion to the table, this item, and how long do y'all, would you need for the questions and relook at the different properties, things that we've talked through, re-listened to this meeting, a couple of months, how long do you think you need?
I think, I think that's the, the idea for additional discussion. I think this particular resolution needs to die.
Okay.
Because we don't need to keep this one going and then try to re-ev, because this, this particular resolution authorizes a specific agreement.
Okay.
And if we're gonna change that up, then we need to do something different.
But I think anything, all these questions to be answered, and let's bring it back to the board in the study session. So if one of y'all withdraw your second, then it could die without a motion.
I withdraw my second.
Your, Director Kemp, your second was to a motion to table. I believe I've made the second, uh, on item one to enable us to have discussion. Uh, I withdraw my second, and we move on to item two. Uh, item two is a resolution accepting the bid of, and thank you, Dr. Mylon.
Thank you.
Accepting the bid of and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Timco Blasting and Coatings Incorporated for the 2016 SSA remedial measures sub basin, basin P double O eight, project number 17 dash 13 dash C one. This is a 17.7 million dollar budgeted, uh, project from the sales and use tax bonds and was tabled pending further review, uh, back at our last meeting on the 11th of November. Mr. Dingman?
Uh, thank you. Um, as, as mentioned, this, these, there were two particular items, the project, the project bid award and the construction observation contract for this project. Uh, these items were on the agenda for the November 4th meeting. Due to the size, cost of the project and the fact that the lowest of the three bids for construction is nearly, was more than $6 million higher than the engineer's estimate, uh, the board wanted further discussion with the, about the project specifically to discuss the difference in the estimated cost versus the bids and the potential for, uh, possibly breaking it up into multiple projects and rebidding. I, I placed that discussion on this special meeting agenda so that the board could take action on the items after discussion if desired. Uh, engineering staff and representatives from the design engineer Hawkins, Weir are present this evening to participate in this discussion and address these questions. Staff, Jimmy Dear, Deputy Director of, um, Engineering for Utilities is, is present here to address these questions.
Jimmy Johnson.
Jimmy Johnson, did I say dear?
Yeah.
That was, that's, my apologies, Jimmy.
And just as a parliamentary note, uh, item three is an engineering agreement related to item number two, so those things can be considered together.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson, any comments from yourself as we get started?
I'd like to give a, just a short, uh, timeline of the two projects. We knew we were gonna have a lot of projects coming in at roughly the same time, so back in June, we had a meeting and we invited contractors, both local and, and statewide, uh, out-of-state contractors come in, introduce them to the upcoming projects, so they'd, they could get prepared to, uh, to bid these multiple projects. And then our first advertisement went out September the 14th for the, all nine projects, these two included. And the bid opening for the project we're talking about, 17 dash 13, was on October the 21st. That's giving the contractor 37 days to prepare his bid for this particular project. Uh, of course, the, the project bid was, uh, 17 million, 741,776 dollars and feet cents, which was substantially higher than the engineer's estimate. And if, if someone from Hawkins and Weir come up and, uh, comment on that and, and just when I get through here, and so with, with that said, the, the contractor had plenty of time to prepare his, his bid. The local contractors had time to prepare their bid, so I, I think they all looked at it. If the local contractors had, uh, capacity to build these projects, I think they would have had sufficient time to prepare their bids.
Okay. Did the gentleman from Hawkins Weir have any introductory comments?
Larry, please introduce yourself when you sit, thanks.
Larry Yancey, Hawkins Weir Engineers, um, I'm sorry. Yeah, Larry Yancey, Hawkins Weir Engineers, I'd be glad to stand for questions.
Okay. Now, thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, do any citizens sign up to speak on item number two?
Yes, first we have Joey McCutcheon, and each will have two minutes.
All right, thank you. Uh, Larry, if you want to just make room for the citizens' comments, thank you. Mr. McCutcheon, thanks for being here.
Thank you, glad to be here. Um, you know, trust is a valuable commodity, and, um, the city has repeatedly violated the citizens' trust, uh, on this consent decree. Uh, and now we can't even agree whether this thing needs to be on a study session or being voted on tonight. And that's quite disturbing. Um, it seems that one hand doesn't know what the other hand's doing. This bid has gone from an initial estimate of $11 million, now it's up over $17 million. That's a $6 million difference. Citizens have asked repeatedly why the city refuses to hire an expert, an outside independent expert, to manage this construction, this, this consent decree project. It's a, it's a valid question. Uh, this isn't just a drop in the bucket. This isn't a brother-in-law deal, and we don't trust what's going on here. That's a $6 million difference, coupled with item number four, that's a $12 million difference, and we're gonna ramrod this through like we were gonna put item number one on a consent decree? I mean, a consent agenda? So the, the question becomes, why will this board not hire an independent outside expert to manage this money? I mean, what, what would, could it possibly hurt? It's a drop in the bucket. It's a drop in the bucket to have an independent source who the people trust. I'm sure that, that folks who are handling this are doing the best that they can, but I've heard repeatedly from this board that they do not have the expertise, and we're seeing another classic example. Now we hear the excuse that local, it's local bidders, local bidders aren't approving, uh, didn't bid on the project, and that's the reason that this is jacked up $6 million.
Vice Mayor Rico, two minutes.
And now we're gonna vote on it tonight? It makes no sense.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anyone else on item two?
Next we have Crystal Caddeli.
I actually would have liked to have gone after Hawkins and Weir, because I probably would have more questions, but, um, you know, my concern is with a big project as this one, is that you limit your contractor options, because not all contractors can get bonded for over $17 million. So it, you know, could be better to break those up in smaller jobs. Um, the other thing I would say, and, and you did say that you had that, um, you know, that bidding, um, conference with contractors back in June, but if it's, if it's a big job, the contractors may need more than 37 days, depending on how many jobs that they have going on at the time. So I would just ask that we be very conscious of, um, you know, how we're putting together these projects and bids, and, you know, make sure that we allow for enough time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Levon Morton.
I previously spoke on these two items, and so you know what I think, that we should, um, we should break these up into, into, um, uh, smaller contracts, and we cannot go with, uh, amounts over the engineering estimate by this much. You know, a few hundred thousand, maybe in the extreme case, 1 million, but the, the biggest problem here is the out-of-state contractors, it seems, are, are just bidding, um, really high. And if we spend 10 million or 11 million dollars more, uh, on these kinds of projects early in the process, we will not have enough money to get the consent decree done under the plan that we developed in 2024 and that the voters, um, adopted based on the sales tax vote in May. I mean, it's a two-step plan, do the, do the bonds, uh, with the sales tax, and then in 2030, refinance the 2018 bonds, and we will come up with about $600 million. We, we, that won't do it if we, if we're paying too much for the early contracts. But if you think about 50 million a year for 11 years in a row, or, and, you know, you get a little more toward the end, you're, you're, you're at 600 million. So you don't need to do $77 million in one year. You can, you can back these contracts up a little bit and, and not be forced into a situation where you're paying way too much, because you've, you've worn out all the, all the capacity in the local contractors. So that's it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Uh, that is all with the exception of, we just have Brett Peters and Larry Yancy to answer questions.
Okay, Mr. Dingman?
Yeah, if I might ask Mr. Yancy to go through, um, the, the process, if you will, of, of creating an engineer's estimate and how, how that, how you put those together, and then how these, these projects compared to that process.
Certainly, certainly. Hawkins Weir, we've tracked sewer projects, yeah, sorry. At Hawkins Weir, we track, um, similar projects, we have current projects that are in construction, track historic bid tabs, as well as any other information that's available. I think we've tracked, um, projects, you know, since the consent decree was, uh, conceived and first projects executed. So we track those numbers as well as any current numbers, uh, that are, that are available to come up with our engineer's estimate. In this bidding cycle, we had five projects that were bid. Three of those projects were, were either at or below our engineer's estimate. And so what changed? Were the, the numbers that we were tracking, or was there something else going on? As we stated previously, you know, these two projects were two of the last of the nine in, in that group of projects that bid. Uh, no local or in-state contractors responded to those. There could be multiple reasons. Uh, I think capacity was mentioned earlier, that could be one of those reasons, but, so these two projects have been late in that cycle and didn't get any local area and state con, um, responses. Uh, and again, that, those could be contributing factors to the numbers that we saw. So again, we've tracked projects, um, similar to this, unit price contracts throughout the city, and again, tried to do our due diligence in tracking those, you know, historically as well as moving forward. Of course, these new numbers and this, this bid cycle would change pretty much all of those numbers moving forward, and we'll continue to track those, uh, for any future projects.
And that, as you, uh, used a, a quantity and then a cost per quantity for, for those engineer's estimates, the, the proposal wasn't necessarily any differences in quantities, it was a difference in the unit price?
Certainly, certainly. All the contractors bid, our unit and our quantity takeoff and have the same numbers, the same units or same quantities, uh, the unit prices will vary, uh, and ultimately how those contractors prepare their bid in a unit price contract. So, yeah, those are, that's where the variations are, and, and then the, the, the discussion is why, or, you know, what, what's changing. Uh, and again, um, it, it does appear that some of the local and in-state capacity is, is being used up and ultimately, uh, may have reflected in, in our bid pricing, so.
Okay.
Could you speak, uh, specifically to the idea of breaking up this particular contractor and the, and the other one that we're also talking about this evening?
Certainly. I think Director Selt had mentioned, uh, this project that we're talking about here specifically is 30,000 linear feet, and it's two times larger than any other project that was bid in the bidding cycle. Uh, the question was, can the project be split? This project does have a pretty natural split into the east and west halves. The east half would tie into basin 10 and 14, capacity improvements project, another project that was bid in this cycle, uh, splits the project almost equally, and therefore we had to anticipate probably an equal split in each of those project sizes. So, uh, could that result in better bid pricing? It could. Uh, it could result in higher bid pricing. Uh, we don't know, but we could definitely can repackage it into two projects, two 15,000 linear foot projects, and repackage it for bidding and, and move forward in that direction if the board so chooses.
Okay. Does anyone want to make any motions, uh, as it relates to item number two, or do we just have a few questions for Mr. Yancy?
I've got some questions and comments without a motion, but I'll leave it up to the board.
Did you? I have questions and comments, but no motion.
Okay. Uh, directors, all right, well, uh, just to be in order, uh, we do need to make sure that we, uh, make a motion as it relates to the agenda, or the item, before we get into director questions, so.
I'll make a motion, please.
For approval of item two?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll second that, and then we'll go to Director Kemp, and then Director Selt, and Director Martin.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Simply put, I think this was the last two of the nine jobs. I think if the window for bidding was a little bit wider and they knew which ones were being awarded on the, on the grab, I think you would have had some guys come back for bids. Uh, I've talked to a couple of them and, and asked them as much, and I think that's where they were. Also, the size of the project is just, it's a lot, it's a lot to bond, especially if they're gonna take on some of the other jobs, so a bigger bid, bigger bid window and all those things. I'd like to see both of these handled that way and see, go back to the drawing table, and hopefully we land closer to the engineering estimates. So that's what my question was, is if that's where we're gonna go, because we have a lot more to talk about tonight. Wanted to know how do we handle this so that we can make sure that things are progressing forward?
Yes, and well said. Director Selt?
Uh, thank you. You know, it's naturally to split these, this first one apart, um, but when you bid nine projects at one time, you actually hurt the bidding process. What should have happened is that we should have bid a couple, awarded them, bid a couple, and awarded them. So this one here, for example, there's three projects, if we split the first one in half, you got three separate projects. I would bid the first one, award it, then bid the second one and award it, and bid the third one and award it. And that way, the local contractors, anybody else can see if they have the capacity, or do they get awarded or not get awarded, so they can bid on the next one. Because right now, you're competing against yourself when you did the way you did it. And that's just the math you did. You compete, you actually competed against yourself, because you put everybody together, and you asked to bid on everything, and they're all not gonna take it, and some said, well, I might get this one, and they didn't get it. Well, they might have bid it on this other one, but they didn't touch it, because they were focused on one or two of these. So to me, I think you should split the first one in half, rebid all three, and bid them in consecutive order, bid it, award it, bid award, bid award. And if you look at, for reference, one of the things that we, was the one for Craft Rentals was 17,950 linear feet with 160 manhole covers. It came in pretty good. But the one, this one has 190, a double the amount, way over, and the other one from Morgan Contracting was 1,200, 12,640 feet with only 130 manhole covers, and they were $4 million over. So something was different on those two. And so I think retaking these back, start refresh, and maybe even look at this one that we had with 130, this other one, and see if it can be naturally split or not. Is that, does there's some terrain issues or something says we could split this bit better? But I think trying to bid a nine at one time affected the poll, and we bid it against ourselves.
Certainly, we can work with city staff to develop a new schedule.
Okay, Director Martin?
Yeah, I'd echo this, and I won't speak very long, but, um, you know, I think when we originally talked this through, we were talking about 50 million a year, like Director Morton, or like Mr. Morton had said. Um, so that gives us 26 to bid out another 50 million, which we, we haven't bid out any, we hadn't bid about 25 million out. This would be another 26, 27 million. So we could move that into 26 and have a nice even, uh, path as we move forward over the next 12 years. So, um, do that, I, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about some of the contractors, but I do know in speaking with some of, uh, some of our local folks, that they would have bid lower, but they didn't have the capacity to be able to do it. So that's, uh, that's, that's how we need to proceed going forward.
Director Good?
Yeah, I want to thank, um, Mr. Morton for your comments and your diligence, staying honest. Um, I just had a question. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with getting, um, with breaking this down into multiple pieces. Uh, my question is, oh, now that the initial bid process has already started, we has already started, moving forward, will the subsequent bid process be affected and will it be effective? I mean, now that those numbers are already out there?
First, uh, the bid, certified bid tabulations haven't been released and typically aren't until the awards are made. So the numbers aren't out there. The total amount may be out there. Um, what we may get in a rebid situation, don't know. Um, you know, hope that, that we would get more response and, and have lower bids, but there's no guarantee that that may be the case. I mean, that's always, uh, kind of part of the process.
Couple of other things that I was thinking of, um, you know, in, in this process, you know, taking a, taking a larger, uh, job opposed to breaking it down, let's say you had a, a company that, that made multiple bids and they were awarded, now they will be forced to, uh, do extra permits, correct? Uh, staging, you know, all that stuff that, that we don't see that goes into setting up?
Certainly. There's a chance that, uh, the mobilizations, uh, any per-EMs and those type things might be duplicated. So there is that, that possibility that, that could happen.
Yeah. Very, very, will probably happen.
I think, uh, I can't make the motion myself because I'm chairing the meeting, but I do think it would be wise for us to consider with these projects, um, you know, specific study session where we, uh, talk about and are presented with the breaking up, uh, of these projects and where we also can contemplate, um, the, the project management, uh, of the overall effort moving forward. Director Getzavas?
I'm the one that called this special meeting for the specific purpose of discussing the 911 call center. Um, I never had any intention of adding these items, so I'd like to make a motion to table items two through five until the first study session in January.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor regarding items two through five. Any additional comments on that motion? Seeing, seeing none from a director, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion at hand.
Director Rego?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
George Getzavas?
Yes.
Christina Getzavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin? Motion passes six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Dingman, is this a clarifying question?
Yes, please. Um, I was just going to clarify on the, the, uh, the dates of, of, the dates for the bids to remain valid. Uh, I, you mentioned, uh, it was mentioned at the last meeting, 60 days potentially past the, um, okay.
Can withdraw their bid. They don't have to, but they, they can withdraw their bid after 60 days.
It, that's relevant information and we are aware of it. Thank you. Um.
Motion to adjourn this special meeting.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. And, uh, without objection, uh, may we have a brief, uh, three, uh, five-minute recess prior to the start of the study session? Thank you.
You're crazy. I know. Isn't that true?
Scheduled meetings of the Board of Directors for 2026. And I believe our city clerk, Ms. Sherry Gard, has some comments she'd like to make by way of introduction to this item. Ms. Gard?
Yes. By state law, the Board of Directors are required to call their special meetings for the meetings of 2026 by ordinance. What is presented to you before you is the 2026 board meeting calendar. Just for sake, just for time purposes, I will just kind of briefly summarize the calendar there for you. All meetings are set for the first and third Tuesday of each month, with the exception of, if you will look at October, because it has been requested that the board will not meet on that first Tuesday in October for, that is, the National Night Out event. So what we have done this year is we have moved that to Monday, proposing it for Monday, October the 5th. The second one that is a little off from the normal first and third Tuesday for the regular meeting is November. The reason we are recommending that be on Monday is because November, Tuesday, November the 3rd is the evening for, is the day for the general election. So a lot of incumbents and it like to campaign throughout the remainder of the day. If you will look and see at all of the, every month that has a fifth Tuesday, we typically will go ahead and put that on there. We schedule it tentatively, but we typically, I mean, it's there if the board wishes to meet on that fifth Tuesday. All holidays are indicated on the calendar. Josh, can you, I don't know if you can put that up there, but, but everything is presented for you. There's no, like I said, there's no holidays that conflict with any of the regular meeting dates or a study session date. So it is presented for your consideration. Oh, one thing I do want to mention, too, is that although it's not required, study sessions do require a concurrence of the board. It's not required by ordinance, but it does require a concurrence of the board. And also, too, if you will look at in November, when your budget hearing, we are tentatively proposing for Friday, November the 13th, which you do, you can decide that now or you can decide that later, just at the board's discretion. And we do request that this item be placed on the December 2nd regular meeting for consideration.
Okay. Do we have any inputs to share with Ms. Gard this evening about the calendar? Okay, hearing none. Can we have two directors offer their concurrence to place this on the December 2nd regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Thank you all very much. Items 2A, B, C, D, and E are proposed CIP plans. 2A is the CIP for Water Systems Maintenance and Improvements, 2026 to 2035. Mr. Dingman?
Thank you. I'll have Jimmy Johnson come and speak to this item, Water Systems Maintenance and Improvement, Capital Improvement Plan. Jimmy?
And Jimmy, and our presenters for this evening, if you would just please make the introductory comments you would like to make, and then we'll open it for questions from directors.
Okay. So I've got a few housekeeping items on the CIP. First of all, the 2025, the starting balance of $27 million and change is a combination of around $14 million of money that hasn't been obligated yet, and the other $13 million is outstanding commitments. They're under contract, but they're going to be spent in '26 and '27. So that's how we started with the starting balance. And we're showing no expected revenue for CIP projects. All the money from our rates are going for maintenance and operations of the water department.
All, all revenue?
Yes, sir.
Is going towards maintenance, operations and maintenance?
Yes, sir. We are showing $15 million in congressionally directed funding coming in in 2026. It consists of $12 million, which is earmarked for the transmission line, Project 1933. I've got it tagged as 1616.
Is that coming from Bozeman?
Yes.
So Bozeman is giving us 12 million?
Yes, assuming that we actually get it. It is promised, but...
Okay. So making a visit to Bozeman may be important for us?
Could be.
Okay, thank you.
The other $3 million is for a neighborhood project, 2114 2A, which is a replacement of two-inch water lines, and it also takes care of some fire flow issues that we've had reported in our water master plan.
I might interject here real quick. The 12 million that you mentioned for, from Senator Bozeman's office is, through that program, was 2024 funding. So that funding is available. We just had to get the project moving to realize the 3 million that you mentioned is from a 2026 allocation that was from Congressman Womack's office for that similar program. But that, that money does depend on the approval of a 2026 budget for us to be relatively assured that that will happen.
Okay.
Also, in 2026, we're showing $13 million in reimbursements from the state highway. That's where they're doing highway improvements, and we have under contract these projects. And as we get them completed, they reimburse us the money. Some of the projects are 100% reimbursable, and some of them are just partially reimbursable. Our layout of the water CIP is a little different. We've tried to group everything of like projects together. If you would, and if you'll turn to Section 6 of the CIP, which is Operations and Program Support, that's the last page of the water. So this, just to give you a layout, the 6.2 is regulatory compliance, lead and copper rule, inventory compliance. I've got that laid out with no expenses because the lead and copper rule requires us to replace services from the meter to the home, but it doesn't provide any funding for it, and we're not, we don't think we are obligated to do that.
Is that a congressional thing, or is that an EPA mandate?
It's an EPA mandate.
So it's, it's not passed by Congress. It's been a rule passed by the EPA?
That's my understanding, yes.
And it's, they're telling the cities have to replace personal property copper lines?
Lead, yes.
Lead and copper lines on people's personal properties?
Just lead.
Okay, just lead, okay.
And then 6.3 is the RDOT utility relocation projects. So we have some that are under, under construction, and we'll get that back. The big one that's coming up is Rogers Avenue. That one is going to be fairly big. We've, I've got it marked out as $10 million, and I hope that's enough. But unfortunately, this project is going to be a very low reimbursement percentage. At this point, we're thinking 15% to 20% reimbursement on this, this particular project.
Is that related to the widening of?
Of Rogers.
Of Rogers Avenue, okay.
Yes.
Is there a particular reason why they're not reimbursing a higher percentage?
The, the reason is, is because the, our facilities are within their right-of-way, and they were placed within their right-of-way. So when we get reimbursements, our facilities were there before the right-of-way. But in this case, the right-of-way was there before most of our facilities. So the highway department doesn't participate in reimbursement in those situations. The other big ticket item is Towson Avenue. There's basically two projects. The last two projects in 6.3 are for Towson, Towson Avenue. And in addition to the expenditure here, there's also an expenditure on the sewer that goes along with this. So from our perspective, from utilities' perspective, we don't have much gain in this, but the highway department has suggested, or we've suggested to the highway department that these projects should be 100% reimbursable. We, we feel like we have evidence that all these lines were predated the right-of-way to the state.
Have we heard back about that? Has that been confirmed?
We have not heard back about that.
So what, what happens in that scenario if they disagree with us, and they've got a project that they're going to do?
Well, I think we contest the dates, and I think, and I think we have found sufficient evidence that our, our lines pre-exist the, the right-of-way being turned over to the state, the state highway.
But let's, let's just say they disagree, and they say, I mean, I don't know if we'd have to go to court or whatever, but what, what happens if they say, no, you're going to have to do this? Do we just, I mean, 6.1 million, is that, or 12.2 million? Is that on us?
Well, if that proved out to be the case, then yes, that would be, but we'd have to, I mean, it's, I mean, it's optional. It's not required that we do this, but it's not required that we participate in that. But I think that, I think that that determination would have to be made.
Have we, have we talked beyond the local RDOT? Have we gone up to highway commissioners? Have we gone that far yet?
Yes, and I mean, we sent a letter within the last two weeks.
Have we just called them and said, hey, we need to talk to him, have a, have a face-to-face? Sometimes a quick call and a face-to-face do more than just a letter.
True. So we, we have had a face-to-face meeting with the engineering section, and that's when they, originally, there was no reimbursement. We were just going to do this so we could have the right to, so we could transfer the, the street from the state to the, to the city. These were the costs that would come with, with having to...
That was not the original agreement. The original agreement is 100% reimbursed, everything fixed, before it transferred to the, because they're trying to re, through to the state highway, the Wheeler. So, yeah, that's not what was originally agreed to. So we, we need to go back. If we need to get RDOT involved, beyond the engineering team, let's call the headquarters, get Keith involved, whoever we need to, let's get people involved and do this the right way.
I think the overall picture that's important to, to be aware of, you know, in this presentation, and this represents, you know, the current projected look assessment of water, non-consent decree, correct, water project needs, you know, over this nine, 10-year period, is that, starting in the year 2028, and this is, you know, projection, and obviously, these numbers move a little bit one way or another, but there just needs to be an awareness that there has been identified, you know, over $200 million in needs for the system. And so this is something that we're going to have to be cognizant of and aware of moving forward. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, and along with those identified needs, and many of those needs we've heard of, the transmission line project, the, you know, and things like that related to other improvements, but there are, as you see on the very first page, at the very top of it, we're talking about the anticipated or expected revenue. That, that line, expected revenue, is zero all the way across there because we don't have any identified specific sources of revenue for these projects, starting in 2027.
So we've had revenue in, up to this point, to do some of these projects?
That's, yes.
Where, where's that come from?
A lot of that came from the 2018 water and sewer revenue bonds.
Okay.
And that, those funds are, what'd you say, there's?
Reimbursable. So those funds have been recycled. First, they were recycled because of the, the flood. We, we spent the money and got that money back, and then we've done the RDOT projects that we're getting reimbursements from.
But in terms of dollars that are left to spend from the 2018, you mentioned that when you first started?
13 million.
So are we, so is any money from water going to pay any bond any longer? Or paying any bond, uh, payment?
Well, the, the, of course, the water and sewer fund is combined, and they have a combined debt service, and the 2018 bonds are being paid from that, that combined debt service.
But the, okay. So we just issued new bonds?
And, and the water, the water, the water side of the water fund had, had nothing to do with those. So those are all sales tax bonds, frankly.
Since we're discussing some financial things, I asked our CFO to come up and join us at the table for these CIP conversations.
Right.
To your comment about the debt service, I mean, we are, we are allocating, you know, we do, we do compute the water and sewer allocation between the difference, the debt services being allocated based upon an estimate of the total usage of the bonds proceeds, and whether they went towards water or sewer projects historically, and also into the future. So, so yes, so the water, so as far as, from what we're reporting to you guys, the Board of Directors, the water revenues are, are paying their portion of the debt, debt service, as it relates to which projects the debt went to support or fund. I mean, it's, it's about, it's very close to, it's like 55, 45 split. It's very, the allocation is very close to 50/50, if I remember.
So, so we're paying, we're paying these, these bonds, and we're paying them every year. That's our debt service, debt service coverage ratio. And we're paying 19, $20 million a year?
Mm-hmm.
And we don't have any funds available for any water project? It's all spent?
There is, well, I think they've got, there, there is money in the, there's still proceeds left, which Jimmy's accounted for part of those. I think they're already committed on certain projects already. And there might, there's a little bit of cash left over from excess sales tax or that we transferred in, you know, probably two or three years ago, when we paid off the sales tax bonds. So I don't know, you know, they've, the, the, the water and sewer department keeps up with that, what they've, what they've allocated those funds for. But I know that there is, there's cash sitting there, and I think he's got it accounted for in the beginning balance.
He's got it accounted for, but then in '27, it's gone.
Yeah.
You've got nothing left.
Well, we'll be, it'll be used up, apparently, but...
So what's the, I mean, is there, I guess I'll talk to the board on this one. What, what is our, as of right now, we can't fund anything on this sheet? So how do we, how do we fund that? What are the, what are the options available to it?
Well, in '28, we'll be able to call some of the water revenue bonds, and '28 will be callable, so we could refinance some of those bonds and go out and issue more revenue bonds at that time.
Did we not get favorable terms on those 2018 bonds? Because when I look at the, the debt service, we're spending $11,200,000 just to service those bonds more than the other 2019.
You can't call bonds until it's 10 years old.
Right.
Right, so that's what he said, '28.
'28. So, I mean, you're just, I don't know how, I don't know if they're more favorable than they will be in '28. We just, we can test, we can look at, evaluate that, you know, in the near future, but...
So when, when can we get some estimates on bond proceeds, or proceeds, or revenue, expected revenues available to us? I think that's important. I mean, I see this across the board. I was like, well, okay, no water projects. And I don't think that's necessarily something we can do. So when can we see some options on, 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 you know, how we, how we could fund some of these things, if, if we, if the board chose to fund some of these things? Like, I think we need to understand what that looks like.
I think, I might, I think that looks like rates. I mean, when we took, when we talked about rates in the summer of 2024 and passed a rate increase that year, we talked about the potential for needing additional rate increases subsequently to, to go towards financing long-term debt for some, some addition, for these projects.
But, and, and I guess I can, I can understand that. It would, we, we, we had the one rate increase to fund, you know, to get our debt service coverage ratio and to fund some things, but then the alternative of not doing a second rate wasn't no project at all. Am I, am I off-base on this? I mean, to me, to me, it doesn't make any sense that it's pass a rate increase the second time, or you do nothing, no project whatsoever. Like, I mean, we've got, we've got nothing here.
My understanding was that we wouldn't be doing anything until '28, when we refinance the bonds.
Refinance, okay.
Well, and I might, I might also remind that the schedule of debt service, when we've talked about the sales tax bonds for a period of the, the six-year issuance, but then also the, the 2018 bonds being called in '28, the, the schedule for issuing new water and sewer revenue bonds wasn't until 2030, because I think there were some terms related to the 2018s that made it more favorable to call them in 2030 than in 2028. But that also fit into the schedule of financing projects that we fit into the financing plan that we submitted to the EPA and DOJ. So that would, that would take some, some work also to, to reconcile the difference between calling them in '28 and calling them in 2030, and how, and how they're split out to water and sewer projects.
Is it, is it fair to say, Andy, that as it relates to Item 2A here, which is the Water Systems Maintenance Projects, non-consent decree related, you know, totaling around $240 million? I mean, no, when you're looking each year, starting in '28, at, you know, huge needs, I mean, those were, they're never able to be funded strictly by rates.
Right.
Correct. There's always, numbers of this magnitude always will require some sort of bonding, correct?
That's right. I mean, historically, all water and sewer infrastructure has been funded through long-term bonds at the city, in most cities.
Yeah. Thank you. I do think that Director Martin raises a valid point about Item 2A here. I mean, I, I don't know what the benefit, I mean, I know there's a request to have these CIPs put on for future regular consideration. I mean, what is the purpose or the benefit of approving 2A as it even exists right now? I mean, there's no, we don't have funding identified or even a path way yet. I mean, what is the purpose of approving something that has no funding attached to it?
I, I think, I think it is, it is important to recognize that there is, there are a number of projects that have been prioritized and worked at least that far to put onto a list here to prioritize them for the future. I mean, there is, it is a different, parallel process to identify the funding for them, but I think it is all, it is a good practice to, to maintain this list of projects and schedule them out as to, based on priority and when we think they need to happen. I, I mean, recognizing, yes, we need to identify funding for them, but we also have to have the projects identified and developed in such a way that we can recognize when they need to happen. And I think also for, you know, our 2026 budget, budget plan, the 2026 column on this summary sheet is important because it does call out specific items, specific projects that are either underway or need to happen soon.
Well, and 2026 has dollars.
One question I did have is about water, the water transmission line. You know, we, we, we had a study session a while back that put that number at like 500 some-odd million to be able to construct that water line, and I think that probably had capacity associated with it. I can't remember.
I'm sorry, they had the treatment plan expansion as well.
Okay. So i- is 530 some-odd million, or 585 is what we were told? I didn't, I couldn't come to that in, in looking at these numbers. Am I, am I looking at them incorrectly?
So one of the things that I've done is I've...
I've pushed out the second phase of the treatment to the end of this 10-year capital plan, so all you're seeing is one year of design under this.
Okay. So, so I think, I don't know if I was, was that 317 million in, in water and treatment at this point? I don't know if somebody's done a math there. Well, I just, we're told 585, but here I see, I see 317, I saw 317, so 3, so we're kind of in the neighborhood. So that gets us to how much, how much treatment? How many additional millions of gallons? 55?
Okay, so that's going to take us to, that's going to take us to 62 MGD.
62 MGD. And we're at 40?
At Mountainburg.
Right. We're at 40 right now.
We're at 40 now. And the, the second phase will take us to 70 MGD and replace the 1960s plant.
Okay. So, so the second phase will get us eight additional million gallons?
Right.
Okay. And do we know kind of how long, what the, what the life of that would be? Like, when would we need to do additional capacity at that point? Or are we like 40 years down the road at that point, 50 years?
It's, it's probably going to be 20 years, and we start, need to start looking at a good watershed.
Okay, so, so we're not, we're not necessarily looking at 585 million. We're around 315 million for water line, transmission line capacity, all that.
Right. I think even when we had that, that discussion at the study session, that was, that was given a range, and that 585 was the top end of that range. I think the lower end was in the 300 range.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Director Kemp?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I see us waiting for revenue bonds. I mean, I, as far as the significant work that needs to be done. My question is, though, on regards to the, we have had mentioned about pumps that weren't working and have been out for some time. Is this in the, in the plan, and can you talk to that? Because I mean, it sounds like we may be in trouble if we don't fix those pumps.
Right. So the, the pumps are in equipment replacements.
Do you have the money for those pumps?
A lot of that money would be in the operation budgets instead of the, the CIP for replacement pumps.
And I think timing that out where we can understand how that will impact a debt service coverage ratio, and do we have an idea of that as far as how that would impact that? Is that, because that does get factored in on that, does it not?
I don't, I think, I think the generator, we're talking about replacing the generator at the pumps, right? The $3 million charge?
And it's not been working.
That's going to be a, that, that would be capitalized and wouldn't go against, wouldn't be part of the net revenue available for debt service.
So then it doesn't come to the CIP?
I would, I would recommend looking, if you can, can, if we cannot fund it out of CIP.
So the, the generator at Mountainburg is in the CIP. I've got $4 million to replace the generator at Mountainburg in 2027.
But you're out of money in '27, aren't we?
Yes.
So my point is, do we need to move that up? And do we need to move it up in this CIP?
It would be nice, but it wouldn't be my, it wouldn't be in the top portion of my priorities.
Because my understanding is we could be serviced, we could be served and told that you have to turn that off. I mean, and like, Jeff, do you speak to that?
We're talking about two different things. We're talking about, I mean, Lee, you're talking about, Director Kemp, I'm sorry, you're talking about the hydro generator at Lee Creek. Jimmy is talking about the backup generator at Mountainburg, at Lake Fort Smith. So we're talking, we're talking about two different things here.
I'm talking about the thing that's going to affect me having a good, large source of water. Is that in the CIP?
That's the hydro generator at Lee Creek.
And that is not in this?
That is, so far, that is in the items that we have identified in the operating budget, for expense of the operating budget, and not in, not in these numbers.
But then, Andy, you're telling me... But then, Andy, you're telling me that, that will be something that maybe we could consider putting in a CIP?
I would recommend looking at doing that.
Okay, so.
It's not going to affect necessarily the debt service coverage ratio, but from maintaining adequate working capital and the operating fund for water and sewer, it would be, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend three money, $3 million out of that working capital towards that large.
I wouldn't either. That's why I'm asking the question. Yeah. The other one is.
If we can fund it out of here, that's, that, that was an avenue I thought we should look at, but.
Definitely would like you to look at that. And the other one is, are we, there was mention of this, and I know we're bringing down water leaks. We also talked about water line construction being done by city employees. If, do we have an idea of if the water leaks are bringing way down and we get to a manageable workflow on that? Can we do some water line construction? I see Mr. Meeker getting up. Can we do some of that in-house? And is maybe that a way to start chipping away at the water infrastructure? That's my last question. Thank you.
Yes, we might, we might could do some, but it's, it's hard to say at this point exactly how, you know, how much, you know, we're not going to be able to do major stuff, major lines, but smaller stuff.
You don't want to put that 48-inch line in?
No, no. We're, we don't need to be doing that, so.
Okay. I just, those are things I'd like to make sure that we're exploring. I mean, I think those are, that was a great suggestion, especially if we get leaks down to that manageable level, and I think you're going to have that happen, then now we can get into the idea of getting some wins in towns. Or even, there was, there was talk about, you know, water meters. Maybe some of these meters are not reading right. Can we look at exploring in-house, changing out some meters where we suspect that that could be the case? Or even exploring our own bench test system? I was, I was told, well, we can't test the, the big lines, you know, ourselves. Could we explore, how could we develop that in-house so that we could do bench testing? Those are just some thoughts that I had, based on what I've had from our previous conversations.
So on the bench test, we would have to have an extremely large facility to be able to test the meters over a two-inch. There's one at Fayetteville. If somebody would like to go up there, they're, they're pretty free with giving tours of their site. It's an extremely wonderful facility, but it's, it's huge to be able to test the large meters.
It's my understanding we can test our large meters in the field. We don't have to have, have a bench, so.
You can test two, you can test the flow, the low flow, low flow on the large meters. So what, what they do is they take a two-inch meter out in the field and test the six-inch meter with a two-inch meter and see if at low flow fits, it's accurate.
Because we're talking about how to get revenue. You know, when we talk about budget cuts and things, if we could find a way to generate revenue, but, but doing it in-house, not bringing in, you know, consultants, I think we're setting ourselves a good foundation here with, with managing the crisis part of this, then now we could start maybe being proactive instead of reactive.
So we, we have in the past, in-house replaced over two-thirds of the meters in a little less than two years.
Okay. Those are just ways to generate revenue.
I, I think I would, I would like, and thank you, Director Kemp. You know, as we move through these, I mean, it would seem to me, and just a thought, I think the way 2A, especially the water systems maintenance and improvements, non-consent decree needs, what we're talking about now, I mean, I think this really needs to be re-formatted in how it's talked about and how it's presented to us and how it's presented to the public. I think we really need to have, you know, not all the, the columns and rows and all this stuff. I mean, I think we need to hear from professional folks inside the city who have the responsibility and potentially professional folks from the outside, what we really truly believe in this category, non-consent decree, water systems maintenance and improvements, what absolutely needs to be done by between now and the end of 2030 in order to maximize the use and the safety of our water system. Because it, you know, we can't, we can't just sort of go forward in this giant, you know, basically nine-year process as it's approved here with, oh, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll figure that out or there'll be something, we'll call some bonds at some point. I mean, it needs to be presented to us, not just as a, as a financial problem. We need to hear and have clearly spelled out to us, what are the things that have to happen? What projects have to be done between now and five years from now that will maximize the likelihood of our system still being, doing what it needs to do to provide services to our residents and our customers?
I sort of have that done under.
Well, I, I really don't.
Priority for 2026. So on my priority list for 2026, I show you the things that, for my number one priority is replacing the line going under Interstate 540 at Uper Lane. When the first phase of 540 was constructed, every line crossing 540 was replaced with a steel line and every one of them has failed except for this 16-inch line. And if it fails, we're out of water on the east side of town, period. So then, then I list in priority orders, you know, that being number one, number two, number three, as to what items are most critical for the system.
Sure. And I have no issue, I don't think any of us do, with, as Jeff mentioned a while ago, talking about 2026. Indeed, 2026 is almost upon us. But you move past 2026 on this graph, it becomes, it becomes mathematical, theoretical exercises, so.
Yes.
Matt, I'm sorry.
Our, our biggest and most pressing issues from the standpoint of, of public works and everything on, on the existing system is like Jimmy mentioned right there, the crossing there at Uper Lane on I-540 and then the 30-inch transmission line repairs to hit there at the Midland Avenue Bridge. Those are our two biggest issues and concerns and that we want to see addressed and, and there's funding available, as I understand it, for, for both of those projects, but those, those need to get done.
Thank you. So do we have any action or thoughts as it relates to item 2A?
Are we looking for action?
Well, we have a request about placing each of these resolutions in, on a future regular meeting, but if we have feedback now, now's probably the time for it.
I don't have any feedback besides what I've given.
Okay. Well, we'll move forward to item 2B and we'll circle back on how we're handling each of these. Okay? 2B is wastewater system maintenance and improvements, non-consent decree. And Andy, do you mind just coming up for these, given that there's a lot of financial questions? So 2B, Jimmy, did you have anything particular you wish to highlight for the year ahead? This one has funding or is, is in a better projected funding situation than item 2A?
It's a lot better projected funding. There's, there's one item I, I would like to point out that is in the wrong location. The money is in the wrong location. That's the, on the second page of, is the Mazard Plan Upgrade. This is a future build-out that should be slid all the way to the end of the CIP instead of being front-loaded.
So rather than 10 million in 2026, 30 million, 30 million, 30 million through 2029, you would recommend that all be further to the right?
Right.
Okay. Any questions or comments on 2B?
So, so I know, I know these are all sewer-related, but how do these fall out of the consent decree?
Meaning why aren't these consent decree projects?
Yeah.
Well, the treatment plants aren't part of the CD.
None of, none of the treatment plants fall into that?
And there are, there's a portion of our collection system that is non-CD. Everything in Fort Chaffee is not under the CD. All, all the expansion that's been going on in the city.
Because it's too big.
So to be part of the CD, the, we have to operate the collection and treatment of it. That water is treated by Marlin. It's not treated by us. So it, it doesn't relieve us from having to do the SSA work. It doesn't relieve us from having to make, make the corrections. It's just not, we don't have any penalties if, we don't have any penalties yet. I mean, it could become a separate CD or it could be added to this CD. But that's, that's another example of non-CD spending.
Okay.
Andy, from a financial standpoint, is there anything you wished to highlight about item 2B here and, and 2B and this plan and the funding, looking forward on this one?
Nothing comes to mind unless you have specific questions.
Are there, are any of the planned projects here going to prevent future consent decree violations? I mean, I know they're not non-consent decree related because the government, but, but any of these projects, are they just purely kind of system modernization? And maintenance of it?
They, their modernization, they're upgrading some of our lift stations, you know, rightsizing them to, to make sure that we don't have sanitary overflows. So they definitely have a relation to the CD, but they, they kind of are peripheral.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, Director Kemp?
So the question was, does any of this keep us out of a consent decree? And yes. If we do not take care of our collection system, that's what got us into the consent decree to begin with. One item that we have, and if you'll scroll up a little bit, Josh, is the Aeration Basin for Mazard. And that is because we are currently under a consent administrative order with DEQ. That was a voluntary action that we asked to be put into because we're having problems meeting our, our permit limits. This kind of keeps the scope of what we need to do at Mazard down a little bit, if you will, because we don't have to do the full build-out, but this will bring us into compliance with our permit. My fear is without doing stuff like this, it could end up underneath the consent decree, which then is a mandate.
And the project that you just mentioned is around a $30 million expense spread out over the next three years. But unlike what we're discussing in item 2A, there, there is funding for these efforts, correct?
Right. So the funding for these efforts, and we're being very strategical in these, is actually also the sales and use tax and bond. It was written for Clean Water Act and CD compliance, and it is so that we don't keep seeing a growth in the cost of the CD.
Well, and I was just going to say, if that's, it sounds like it could be linked more than we thought. Is there an opportunity to utilize percentages of those projects to take advantage of our bond issue if it's going to keep us from expanding a consent decree?
And, and that's what we're doing. We're looking at bundling projects, engineering, is working with the operations group that is over the treatment to get our biggest bang for our buck.
Okay. If there's nothing else on 2B, 2C is the CIP overview for wastewater system maintenance and improvements, and this is consent decree. And it, it, am I correct in saying that item 2C represents the current summation, if you will, of the next 10 years moving forward or nine years with the consent decree?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Anything you gentlemen would like to highlight before we have any questions?
I would like to highlight on, on the second page, we got a line item that's $2.5 million a year for contract sewer line televising and CIPP. You know, some portion of that, the sewer line cleaning and televising could be brought inside for public works if they have operable equipment. You know, they, they have, they have a fairly good number in their fleet for television and, and cleaning, but they're, they're old, it's very old equipment. The second item I would like to point out is the consent decree program management is $2.5 million a year. We did not approve the contract for project management this year. But if, if we go with project management, we had to fund it. You know, when we first entered the CD, we did have a project manager that was going to manage all our projects and my predecessor and Lance's predecessor changed directions and we geared up to do that management in-house. But if we make the decision to hire a project manager, then we're going to have this, this expense.
May I ask a question about that specifically? Was the motivation behind that decision to move away from an external project manager model in the early stages of the consent decree? Was that a pure cost motivation or was there a displeasure with the service provided or not provided by the external project manager?
Both.
Okay. Thank you.
Trey, do you remember, I think it was cost-related, yeah, at the time, because we, we didn't have any, we didn't have funding, so we're trying to put everything we could towards the funding of it.
Director Martin?
Who, who was it that we contracted?
CDM.
CDM? Okay. And it was, it's 2.5 million dollars? Is that what we, is that what we were, we had an agreement?
Are you saying was it that high then?
Was it that high then? Yeah.
I think it's high now. I don't think it was high back then.
Well, and of course, this is just a budgeted amount. I mean, not a contract.
I mean, I, I, to be honest, I didn't think it was going to be that high.
CDM Smith contract was, I believe, almost $9 million over three years.
Okay.
We cut that at, I believe, around four to five million that we had spent. We were very dissatisfied with the group and what we were getting on our return on investment. Some of the stuff that we, they helped us with was really good, but for the most part, it was not worth the funds and it was actually something that internal audit and administration and utility management all agreed that it needed to be terminated.
So, so what would we, what could we expect from program management, project management of the consent decree? What would be, what would be our reasonable expectation?
So some of that's going to be the, the financial analysis that we have to do annually as part of the modification. That is built into that as well as there is, in one draft that we did, because we actually started to work on one, and Mr. Dingman and I both agreed that until we had a finalized agreement with the, the government, there was no sense in estimating what we would need. But there was some room for project, actual project management, should we become overwhelmed? We have a, a whole bunch of our engineers leave and we needed help with that. There was a portion of that. And that 2.5 is a not-to-exceed amount. It's, it's not a, we're going to spend $2.5 million. But also hydraulic model on-call was going to be in there as well as some help with the annual report because EPA and DOJ want to change the format to a, a more EPA review-friendly version. And I, I mean, it's not that big of a deal, but it is to, to get that kind of set up to where we could do it in-house. And that's what we actually utilized CDM Smith for in the beginning was our first couple of reports and then after that, there was no need for them because we could do it in-house.
But you weren't, you weren't satisfied with them, right?
We were not satisfied with a lot of aspects of CDM Smith.
Would it be a reasonable assumption that we would see some overall cost savings on the consent decree? I mean, we've identified all these projects and we estimate those things out, but, and let's say we estimate them out at 600 million additional dollars. Would, would it be reasonable for us to come back and say, it's 500 million? It's 550, something like that? Like after, it's all, after we spend the money, we realize? Like after, it's all, after we spend the money, we realize it's less than what we anticipated through that monitoring of what we're spending, looking at the projects that are going out to bid, modifications, those types of things.
That, that is one thing that you can have as part of your program management, is for them to review engineer estimates, delivery types, things of that nature. Again, it's what we request that goes into the scope. You know, I've never been a big proponent of having an engineer just write the scope and give it to you. We've always, okay, we work together on the scope so that we get what we want, the engineers don't have a blank check when they're writing scope. So to that end, if that's something that the board would want in a program management, we would put that in, maybe we, maybe we cut something else back a little bit to keep the cost down, because I wanna be very cost effective in anything we do.
But, I mean, it's kind of like our internal auditor. Internal auditor at a minimum should pay for themselves. I would, these people at a bare minimum should pay for themselves, then also with the size of this whole thing.
Right.
You should see savings coming off the backend. Doesn't mean we're not gonna pay for the next 10 years, or the next eight years, but at some point, instead of 600, it's, it's, you know, 500, 550, something like that.
One thing that, and I believe Director Saddle will remember, we had a, I think it was a five, three, three-year or four-year contract with CDM right up front that should have never been entered into. When you're looking at program management, something like that, it's a year-to-year agreement. So if, at the end of the year, you're not happy, you just don't enter into a new agreement, and you've, you know, what you've spent in that one year, you're done. So that, that then also, as I mentioned, like the annual report, you can sit there and look at that and say, okay, we can, now that you've helped us with the first one or two, from here on out, our staff can handle that. We, we're not gonna pay you to do something that we already know how to do. So you can right-size that as you go as well.
I guess what I look at is, I look at these two projects, the ones in-house, one's proposed to do out-house, and so why not bring in, reverse them, why not bring in the television, sewer line, TV cameras, bring that in-house, like we did the painting for the streets, see what the cost would be. At the end of the day, you might find out you can do it cheaper, which you probably will be, and then flip it and say, what would it cost to do program management, construction management, budgets, whatever, outside, and bring that to the board and say, hey, it's gonna cost this for this and this for this, and let the board make their call.
Yeah, I think Mr. Maker actually has already kind of looked at the cleaning and televising, and I hate to put him on the spot, but if he has, I'd be more than happy to relinquish my time to him.
Well, and as he comes, I'd even say, it's okay to bring these things in, but we do need to make sure, do they have the manpower, and do they need more manpower, and not being against adding their more manpower, especially if it's gonna bring a big savings.
So we've got, we've got five jet trucks, and we've got two camera trucks. And so our five jet trucks, we try to keep three, I mean, they're, they're old. We're budgeting to replace one of them this year, our oldest one's a 2008. We try to keep three running at all times, but a lot of times, we've only got one running at a time out of the five, and so we're not in good shape equipment-wise. If we have the equipment, yes, we can do it. Camera truck, we also have an issue where we've got a camera truck that's down all the time, one of our two, so yeah, it's just a matter of keeping the equipment up and running, but that's gonna probably take some investment.
So is it equipment and personnel? What about personnel?
I think we're fine on the personnel front, it's the equipment issue.
But we need those for the consent decree, correct? We need, we need to be doing the television cameras for consent decree?
Yes.
So that follows under the consent decree?
Okay. Mr., Director Martin?
And yeah, one, one thing that I would like to have come to the board is that program management for us to be able to review. I think we need to take bids, I think we need to, we need to move.
That was my, that was my suggestion.
Okay, I think we need to move on. It's in '26, like we need to have that in '26.
Early '26.
Yep. So I would.
And even in the scope of that, I'd like to see that the projects potentially may be needing to be moved forward, you know, if we had a firm look at this and say, hey guys, I know y'all seen it this way, but I like outside-the-box thinkers, because they're not in our constant, you know, battles of what we're having to always shuffle and do. If they can come in and say, yeah, but if you move these two or three projects up, you're gonna have a savings or less SSOs, and maybe a, maybe we can go back to the federal government and say, hey, we wanna take out these projects, because by moving this project forward, we've resolved, you know, another 30% on the SSOs. So I mean, those are sort of the things that I'm thinking about when I think about a firm.
And I think we should have that conversation, you know, concurrently or close to concurrently with when we're reassessing those projects that we tabled earlier to the breakdown.
If I may, two things. Number one, we cannot bid out program management, it is a professional service under state law. We can do an RFQ if the board should, should like that, and we can actually have the board help set the scope, but I did wanna make sure that, that I stated that upfront. And we, we actually, one thing I will point out, the CIP, as you see it for the CD, was what we said we would do with DOJ and EPA. They are not opposed to us moving things up. In fact, that was the whole reason we had to look at bonding, is because they wanted everything moved up. We, we do need to be very careful in, if we move things back, that we're still meeting the requirements. And I will let you know that Jimmy has worked very hard on the design projects that you approved last Tuesday. Those are to reduce the number of SSOs that we have, and we are working on a project management plan that, or, sorry, an asset management plan that actually looks at where the SSOs are, and that will be what drives the, the designs and the projects in the future, and that's something that EPA has actually agreed to, and that's, that we're working on, on the negotiations.
I mean, I think it'd be appropriate to have the two or three top, you know, management firms who are talking about, come and give a presentation to us about their pitch of what they can do and why they should be picked. I mean, we're talking about a massive project for the city of Fort Smith, it's one of the number-one things that we're always talking about. I'd look to, I'd like to hear their, their, you know, sort of elevator, expanded elevator pitch on why they should be picked to be the management firm for us.
And I would look at that. In and out of the city, or maybe somebody outside the city that's got.
There, I will state that we would be looking at a, if you remember, former Director Morton talked about searching all over the nation, that was actually what we were looking at, was people that actually had experience with CDs and program management in CDs, so, thank you.
Okay. So since items 2A through C all deal in that water and wastewater space, and we will need to make some changes, we've talked a little bit about them, I think in a regular meeting's probably the legislative vehicle for making those changes. Do we have concurrence from at least two directors to place items 2A, B, and C for consideration on a future regular meeting agenda?
Still moved.
Do you have a second? Okay, Director Kemp and Director Good. Thank you, and Andy, if you don't mind staying for these next two, just in case there are financial questions. Thank you, Jimmy. Item 5, 2D is the five-year CIP review for the police department. Chief Baker, out of his sick bed, very patient with us tonight. Hope that you've had some improvements today, sir, and thank you for being here.
Try not to go dying on you.
We would very much appreciate you not dying.
Is that agreement or concurrence? First of all, I apologize for the mask, but I don't think anybody wants to get a dose of whatever it is that I've picked up from wherever, and I've also completely forgotten how irritating these things are. Well, that's booting up. I'll go ahead and say, what I shared in the email to you today is that I intended to present two options for our capital improvement plan tonight. One that included the purchasing of vehicles outright and the other leasing vehicles from enterprise leasing. Really trying to get all this together at the end of last week while I was in Durant, Oklahoma, and there were some last-minute hiccups with insurance costs that would be associated with the leasing program, and I did not want to bring something to you that had any kind of questions about costs that weren't presented, that I didn't have the answers to. And so we're gonna continue to try to get answers. I'm not sure what that's doing. This worked fine when we first came in here.
So Chief, are you saying, because we have the two options here, one for purchasing, one for leasing, are you saying that, you know, at present, you're not, you would not be comfortable with us proceeding with a leasing option?
That is correct. If we get to the point where we can find a pathway that, and it still makes sense, that we could present to you, then we'll do that, but as it is right now, I'm requesting to pull that option from discussion, and we'll just look at our CIP as a purchase option.
So, so since the vehicle conversation is a little bit stalled out, no pun intended, are there, are there other, what are the other items that you really wish to highlight for us that are non-vehicular in nature?
So do you have, are you looking at the?
Yes, sir.
The Excel spreadsheet?
Yeah, we have the packet in front of us.
Okay. So first of all, it's very difficult to put together a capital improvement plan, because I don't know what the funds that are going to be available to us. If you look on the tab one, year one through five, this begins in 2026. We removed, at administration's request, removed the personnel category that was historically there since the beginning of the sales taxes, and created essentially a turnback fund that's being line 22, or row 22 in red, the total available for salaries. So each year, making funds available to turn back to the general fund to help with the salaries, the police officer salaries. But my previous presentation to the board, I had indicated that I intend to request a 10% across-the-board raise. That included having available $1 million general fund, equipment fund, that I have been told is probably not gonna make it through budget discussions. So removing that from the equation in the first, or column C of 2026, it's a list of proposed expenses, and you can tab on, on each of the categories for technology, mobility, and facilities, and I really hope to be able to do this live. Oh, it is behind me. Let's see. All right, there we go. So for technology, looking at $737,000 for the Axon annual payment, that includes our body worn cameras, our in-car cameras, tasers, Axon Perform, this storage, video storage. This is, is an annual contract cost. For crime prevention and detection, we're looking at $25,000 to refurbish our portable elevated observation tower. This is something that's used quite regularly for special events, a large crowd events, and also is borrowed by agencies in Northwest Arkansas. We often do equipment trades, they have some equipment that we need, special equipment, and they don't have a tower, so we regularly put that on loan to other agencies, particularly in Northwest Arkansas. And then under officer safety and equipment, we're needing to purchase additional Walther firearms. The department's been going through a transition to those officers that want them to carry Walters instead of Glocks. We're also adding optics to those weapons. We made considerable inroads this year with funds that we had available, but we still have additional, ah, there we go, outstanding. Hopefully it'll stay. Annual expense for body armor, now, this is the full cost. If you look back here on, on the first tab, I've also built in revenue sources, some of these you've seen before, some of you haven't, but I'm gonna be completely transparent about the dollars that we're talking about and potential revenue sources. I added for this year, grant funding. We historically receive the federal bulletproof vest grant, as well as the JAG grant for use of our equipment. And so 2026 is our light year for the JAG grant, so we're anticipating between it and bulletproof vests, a total of $46,600. And so that $93,000 expense for bulletproof vests, roughly $21,000 of that will be paid for with a grant. We can go through every year if you want to, but if there's any item on there specifically that you wanna ask me about, there are some things that were on previous capital improvement plans that I have removed for the time being, until we maybe seize a little bit better financial situation for the city. But primarily, our biggest need in capital is in always-will-be vehicles. And so in lieu of completely starting a brand-new fleet of 60 vehicles that we can replace every five years on a regular basis, reduce maintenance costs, all the things, all the benefits that we were hoping to achieve through the leasing program, what we've presented is the next best thing. This doesn't, doesn't provide every officer with a vehicle, as we'd like to do for the, with the take-home program, but it does get more vehicles on the streets. So in 2026, we're looking at purchasing 17 patrol vehicles, four special op vehicles, five CID vehicles, which are typically unmarked, two K-9 vehicles. The two K-9 vehicles that we currently have in our fleet are on their absolute last legs. We've got, we have got to replace those vehicles if we're gonna continue to have a K-9 program. We need to start replacing some bicycles and motorcycles. We've got, we've got a couple of motorcycles that are getting pretty high mileage now, been going since 2018, and similarly for subsequent years.
Chief, if I may, so.
Yes.
In the 2026, the, it's the mobility section, the vehicular amount you're seeking to spend would be $1,750,000, is that my reading that correct, adding up to totals there under mobility?
1.3, $300,000, $85,000. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And then on facilities, really the, I mean, we've, we've got, we've got the headquarters building that, I mean, it's getting old, we need to continue to do work on it, but the big expense for 2026 is environmental control system. We requested that last year, it was cut. We have a $300,000-plus cooling tower and boiler system that we just replaced that is in danger of being badly damaged or destroyed if we don't update these environmental control systems. This is so that the facility maintenance person can monitor the systems remotely and knowing that there's something amiss, and address those problems before they turn into major issues. We're not doing anything with the firing range in 2026. The only thing that I included for the second precinct and the training facility is our expected design costs. We've already spent roughly $20,000 in developing the initial schematics for that facility. If we get to a certain point and can't go any further, then we won't be billed for design phases that we haven't gotten to. But currently, the, the second precinct project is unfunded, and you can see in the details at the top, the, the two designs that we currently have, which, I mean, one is the, what, the full mont- the full monty, the, the, everything that we'd hoped to accomplish with the training facility, a fully functioning second police department, crime information center. Current estimates are about $11 million for that. Split into two phases with the training facility being first, 4.6 million, and then development of the second precinct and crime information center at 6.7 million. And then the lighter version, option B, is 8, 8.3 million. And I'm sure we can pare it down even more. I think probably the, the biggest asset that we can launch there is the dedicated regional training facility. I think that will, where we get the, the most interest for help with funding. It would also get police officers on the location, just not to the level that we had initially hoped. And so design costs are, are built in 27, 28. I do have in 2027, spending $75,000 on upgrading the community room at the police department. The carpet in there is aging. There's some technology updates that we need to do just to make it more of a usable space. And then replacing all of the carpeting upstairs with laminate flooring in 2028. Then 29, continuing design costs and phase two construction, but highlighted in yellow is unfunded. So going back to tab one, the year one through five, if we look at the anticipated expense for 2026, 2.7987 million dollars. We have total anticipated funding, including carrying forward 2.2, approximately 2.2 million dollars that we have accumulated in our sales tax fund, puts us at 6.6 million, 229,600. And then you can, well, you can't see, but it's built into the functions, the, the total funding minus the expense. With us clawing back $500,000 to keep in our sales tax fund, leaves a total available for salaries at 2.93 million. If we had had the $1 million general fund, the dedicated amount, you see that brings that to 3.9 million. And so, I mean, if you, if you, if there are questions, if you think, you know, there's something here that you think we should spend less on or, or more on, I mean, I, we can manipulate the numbers now, but, I mean, we really are asking for the bare minimum, I believe. I believe this is a compromise over what we were hoping to accomplish and hopefully we'll be able to find a pathway to make the fleet leasing possible.
Well, and so Chief, I mean, in summation, your expenses that you're requesting total about 2.8 million dollars and your anticipated revenue is 3.6 million dollars. And so, you know, thank you for the work that you and all the folks in your department have put in throughout this process to present us with something that, you know, represents what you need and what you desire in a, in a sustainable way. Does anybody else have any comments or questions for the chief? Director Kemp?
Yes. Chief, the, I just was talking to a vendor in town and then I've heard it from another, another mechanic firm as well on, so I've heard of two separate people. Have we ever explored going back to when we have a vehicle worked on, that we haven't worked on with one of our Fort Smith guys, or if we're going to outfit a vehicle that we don't use, like, I think they're talking about that we might use Omega and Van Buren, but I know there was some company that I talked to that said, man, I wish we would have a chance to earn the right to, to be able to show Fort Smith that we could do some stuff.
I was not aware that there was anybody available in Fort Smith. When we went with Omega, they were the only game in town that could handle the, the number of vehicles that we needed serviced. They also, they also offered a, a five-year warranty on all of their installation. So, I mean, that would, that would obviously be a big selling point, but, I mean, if you have a line on, on another vendor, we'd be happy to consider them.
Yeah, I'll definitely get that for you because there, there was one that I think, you know, they're trying to get things going and have a pretty decent-sized operation, but as we were talking about it, that just came up in conversation. I think for me, I'm just talking to my fellow colleagues here, it's, it's, it's more about, I need to see the entire general fund picture here and, and understand it. And I'm really looking forward to the budget hearing because I think there are many ways to try to get to a balanced general fund budget. There are many ways to get there and, and so I don't think we have to just narrow down on some things here, but I needed the knowledge, so I appreciate the information. But I am looking forward to figuring out from the conversation, how can we get there in the best ways possible that get the most equipment possible, or things that we need, that services that we know we need to provide possible. We need to have those conversations and so I'm looking forward to the budget hearing mainly.
Anything else for Chief Baker? Chief, any, Chief, any final words for us?
I just want to go home, go to bed.
I understand. We hope you get well soon.
Well, I appreciate that. And I, listen, I, I completely understand the need to balance the budget, to reduce the deficit spending. And, I mean, I know that tough choices are going to have to be made, but I would really, really ask that you think hard before cutting salaries and personnel from the police department. I don't think it's going to go well. The vehicles will help. It will give, give, give them a glimmer of hope, so hopefully we'll be able to accomplish that. But I do understand and appreciate the situation that we're all in, that you're having to, right. So that's all.
Thank you for being here, Chief. Thank you for pushing through.
Yeah, thank you. And our last presentation for the night is from our new fire chief, Chief Clark, for the five-year CIP for the fire department, out of their portion of sales and use tax. Thanks again, Chief.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. Can't keep a good man down. It's all yours, buddy.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any opening comments for us, Chief?
Well, ours has pretty well stayed the same for several years, several years since I've been involved. Apparatus continues to be the main problem that we're dealing with. Turnaround times, expenses. We're still on track. We've extended out the, how long 4803 is going to last for us. With the refurb's that we're doing, we're kind of in the same boat though, wanting to see what comes of the budget hearings because, like Chief Baker said, we've already been talking, we know there's got to be some tough decisions made, but to prevent really drastic decisions, it would have to be make, made another year or two if we don't start writing this. But I pretty much just stand for questions that anybody has on any of it.
What are you seeing for lead times for pumpers now and ladder trucks? Is it still two or three years or has it gotten better?
Oh, yeah. We're, right now, I'm working on Rescue One, which is a tough one because our pumpers and our ladders, we're pretty happy with what we've been ordering, so we can pretty much order it, be under contract in a very short period of time. Heavy rescues, a one-off, fully custom, 48 months to 51 months was the estimate, so I should have ordered it a couple of years ago.
Four years?
Yeah, because our current one has about, it has over 120 really hard, 120,000 miles on it.
Is that's what, is, is it, is that what's driving the cost up? There's so, there, the, there's so many people wanting them, so it's just driving the cost up? Is that part of the equation?
There's been federal hearings on Pierce and Rev Group's leadership were brought in that I've watched. I don't thi, I don't know that anything will come of it. They're supposed to be actually doing an investigation, they claim, because it has gotten ridiculous. Rev, we would be in worse shape with Rev Group, really, because people, at least we can get our parts. Departments with Rev Group have had trucks down for over a year waiting on certain parts, but.
Are they, are they in the state's Rev Group or are they located at?
They own everything but two or three fire apparatus manufacturers now. Because I looked at another, we're an all Pierce fleet now. I actually looked at a different vendor for a rescue, since it is a fully custom one-off. They make outstanding bodies out of Colorado. It's a small, small company. They only build about 55 a year. They're all handmade, they're a little more expensive, but we have a lot of body issues. They have outstanding, that's their specialty, is how great their bodies are, but it only comes on a chassis and cab that comes from Rev Group, so it would make nightmares for my fleet maintenance guys. So we stuck with Pierce.
I mean, I remember when we put this tax out there years ago, the, you know, it was like a million dollars for a truck or even less for a pumper. Now they're.
Oh, yeah. We were probably about 600,000.
For a pumper? That sounds about right, and about a million for a ladder, is that about right?
Yeah.
And we thought that was high back then and now.
Oh, yeah. I was, I was a captain on the, when we bought the six with the Bond and the new station and the 4803, that were 1.1 million for those towers and.
So is there anybody new jumping into the game? It seems like a great business to be.
Well, that's actually where I was going to go with my next comment was, does it make sense for us to talk to the, our chamber and say, hey, you need to go recruit this, this company to come here and put a plan here, because it seems like there's a need to drive more fire apparatus to lower the cost. To your point, Lee.
They are trying. They bought a plant in Tennessee because they have tapped the Appleton, Wisconsin area. They also have a plant in Florida where they build another cabin chassis, because we actually had considered, it is a, we buy the Cadillac of fire apparatus, their Florida plant builds the Hyundai or Chevy. So Roland just bought one and we had high hopes to see how their experience was and it was horrible. I mean, they had huge mistakes. The pump housing was completely messed up and, because those cheaper ones now are going for, Roland paid about 700,000 for theirs for volunteer fire department, so. But, so that one kind of was out, but it's hard to go to other vendors because it gets hard on the maintenance side because it gets costly with additional software for diagnosing stuff. The engines, pretty much, we, we stick with Cummins, you know, so we would be okay there. Pierce's electronic system, which are really, really involved, are proprietary.
Is there thought more anymore about the Tahoe, you know, one of the things I thought was interesting was getting something like that, so we're not sending that big truck out for everything out there that's being called out?
We tried for a couple of years, but they just keep getting cut, but we're, we're taking steps. We just moved last week to the new Pro Phoenix CAD, so we had to wait for that because Chief Waters and I had worked on changing our run assignments for calls and we have reduced fire alarms now to a pumper and a ladder going to it to greatly reduce the number of apparatus, because we had five apparatus going to an alarm, a fire alarm, which was overkill. We did have all our company officers go through, identified high hazards in their districts just so, we still run five apparatus to our hospitals, our schools, daycares, and any type of industrial high hazard that they identified. We put a identifier on it in the new CAD system so that it will tell the dispatcher to send the original five. We didn't, didn't want to get to something like a nursing home and then, because fire alarms do turn out to be a real fire sometimes.
Lee, do you want to start a business, you and I go together and make fire trucks?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about trying to find a way so the city can have revenue and I'm thinking a fire truck business sounds like a great plan to be a part of. No, I don't have any other questions, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Chief Clark? Okay. Can we have, thank you, Chief, a, two directors place the police CIP and the fire CIP on a future agenda?
Sommude.
All right. Thank you and thank you, Chief. Folks, please take some time to review the preliminary agenda for the November 18th regular meeting coming up next Tuesday. Just as a reminder, thank you, Eddie, the city offices are closed tomorrow, November the 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. Thank you, Josh, and the communications folks for communicating, as always, with holidays about service adjustments. Now we'll go into our citizens forum portion. Madam Clerk, who do we have first? Just as a reminder, folks have five minutes.
First we have Glenn Forte.
Hi, folks. I'd like to make an issue about a crazy neighbor that calls the fire. The ambulance at all hours. She's on painkillers and alcohol, waking me up, waking the neighbors up. The police are parking at the church, walking with the light, did not make lights and make noise, and she's screaming and hollering. I need help. I need help. When are we going to stop it? It's abuse to the people on the street to have a fire truck and an ambulance show up at 11:13 in the morning. She tried to kill her mother. Her mother's gone now, supposedly somewhat to the injuries, and the fire department lived at her house for a couple of years because her and the mother used to get into it. The mother's 82 years old, she had a need replacement, and the daughter moved in and the daughter would be the instigator going after the mother, and I didn't know why the fire truck kept coming to the house. They told me why, it's because they got into it all the time. Now the daughter's high on drugs, she's bringing Johnson off the streets, and I'll leave it at that. Now I'm going to get to a situation, being a senior citizen, I had a vehicle at a garage. The mechanic told me the landlord had a tow. I called the tow company, they told me the mechanic shop had a tow. I go to pick it up at $650 for a tow for less than three miles. Now I understand the owner of the business is in control to 10 or 12 licenses, running organized crime out of there because there's allegations, there's been money laundering, illegal activities, and I'm not going to go to the police department with this, I'm going to go to the FBI. That's how bad I feel about this police department to investigate this. They take me as a foreigner from another world and think they can hook me for 650 for a tow for less than three miles. The other issue I have is Patriot Utilities have come to my neighborhood. The city's never used a street sweeper in my neighborhood. We have gravel, we have asphalt, we have dirt, we have stone all over the streets of my neighborhood because the machines drop it while they're working, they never clean up. They leave trash and debris and buckets in people's yards and pieces of machinery in people's yards. It shouldn't look like this. It looks like hell. I had the city down there, one of the parties here in the room is Maggie Rice and Carl Nevin, and I believe somebody by the name of Johnson, an engineering, come down. The place looks like hell. They dig holes, they had a hole there for three weeks, maybe a month, six feet deep. One end of it wasn't protected, the side wasn't protected. I had to call the city. I called Sean Goddard, Glenn, I'll take care. They dig holes, they had a hole there for three weeks, maybe a month, six feet deep. One end of it wasn't protected, the side wasn't protected. I had to call the city. I called Sean Goddard, Glenn, I'll take care of it, no problem. He did take care of it, he did a great job. But it took three days for someone to get out there to fix it. I could have drove my car in it, or a kid could have fell in there. It's a disgrace, the way this company operates. It's a piss-poor operation. That's all I have to say. They should be fired. My neighborhood? The ghetto. North End Street. North End Street. Go take a ride over there tomorrow, and I also ride a scooter. I'm 70 years old. There is shit from one end to the other end because of this company. You people have never come in that neighborhood and swept the street. It never needed it. Now, the asphalt they put on the streets to patch them, it's all over the other streets in the neighborhood. They went out and cleaned it. They left one little pile of gravel on the corner of North End, six houses from my property. That's all the cleaning they did. There's gravel all over the edges of the streets. And they expect to get paid. Then they leave for weeks at a time. Two and three weeks at a time, they leave. Machinery in the street, vehicles in the street. We had a cancer patient have a fund raiser two weeks ago. It's very inconvenient. And for the mailman and UPS. It's a disgrace of this company, the way they operate, and it's a shame you people hired them. Patriot Utilities is on the vehicle that does the digging. Sew line. And they've left the cement, two pieces of basins in the guy's yard across the street since April. They still haven't put them in the ground. They stand out there with their hands in the pocket, one guy sitting on a machine doing nothing for hours. I have taken pictures and video. I didn't bring it in, but I can. It's a disgrace. Thank you all.
I know that Jeff and Maggie have taken some notes on these items, and we'll be looking into some of those things that have been brought up. Who do we have next, Madam Clerk?
Next, we have Eric Weidman.
Thank you for being here, sir.
Hey, everybody, this is my first time at this, so bear with me, please. I grew up here most of my life. I remember when Mayor Ray Baker used to say life's worth living in Fort Smith, Arkansas. Well, it's not anymore. It's up to everyone here to make it better. I want to know what your plans are dealing with the city of Arkoma not paying their bills? And is there any way to enforce what you might already have in place?
Well, we, they've charged, we're in medi, are we in mediation? Is that what you would call it? We're, we're working with them?
We are, we have, we've, we've got a third party working with us and an uninterested third party to evaluate the, the rate proposal that we devised last spring, May and June timeframe. Arkoma was not, was not in favor of the proposals that we made. And so, our, our $8.75 per CCF wholesale rate is what is their rate going forward. And so, as they've been billed, they've been paying a portion of their, of their bill, but they've not paid all of it. So, we do have an outstanding balance. In the meantime, we are working with them through, through this third party to, like I said, evaluate the, the rate setting that we put together. And they, we had a meeting with them last week to, and traded some more information with them. And we anticipate within the next week or so, we go to, to have some information back regarding analysis of how, how the rate should be constructed and how the rate that we devised is either similar or different to what the independent third party comes back with. And so, assuming they come back with a rate for us to consider, for Arkoma to consider, assuming it's acceptable to both governing bodies going forward, then we'll, then we'll bring that to this board and we'll have that discussion. Other than that, that's, that's all that I can report really at this point.
All right, thank you. Okay, I want to know what the city of, why the city of Fort Smith is even discussing the Towson Avenue deal? What do we possibly have to gain from it?
Flood mitigation.
The state highway is going to give up, they're going to give up the rights to the highway of Towson Avenue so that we take it over with them repaving it? Or they're going to just drop it and move their state highway to Wheeler? It's not, it's, this is a state highway initiative. They are going to remove a bunch of state highways throughout the state of Arkansas. So, it's, we, we said, okay, we'll take it over, but you have to pave it, get it ready for us to take over so that way it starts. Because if not, they would just said, we're done with it, and they'd give it to us without any fixing.
And businesses have been flooded. So, by making them, what he just talked about, by us pushing in on this, we're going to be able to deal with the flooding issues.
Aren't you going to have to do the communication or the lighting or something like you're talking about on East Rogers Avenue? Aren't you going to have to do that on Towson Avenue also?
They'll reimburse us for those, they'll reimburse us for those costs, anything like that.
Also, the sidewalk all the way down Towson. You talked about life worth living in Fort Smith. I mean, there's places where it's hard to walk down. Our dot will be fixing that as well.
Obviously, it's been resurfaced. They'll put sidewalks on either side and fix the stormwater flooding that happens whenever, whenever we have heavy rainfalls.
All right, thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, with all due respect, I saw you walk out or leave the meeting after jumping down Mr. Casados' throat for asking a perfectly legitimate question. You said you had a previous family commitment. Don't you have a previous commitment to the citizens of Fort Smith, Arkansas? You probably knew about the city board director's meeting before you made your family commitment. I found it disrespectful, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Next, we have Joey McCutcheon, but I think he has left. Okay, then we have Carl Nevin.
I'm Carl Nevin. I appreciate all of y'all for the hard work you're doing. I do appreciate the $10 million deficit that you're dealing with. I know that's not easy. What I want to talk about is the $11 million engineering estimate and how it went to $7 million, or $17 million, a $6 million increase. I think that, that honestly needs to be broken into two different contracts. Hopefully, we can save some money there. That's all I have, thank you.
And that's what we're endeavoring to do.
Next, we have Chris Caddeli.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. We were involved with a FOIA request a couple of weeks ago, and so, that's what I want to speak on tonight. Got some rhetorical questions I'm going to start with here. What constitutes a conflict of interest? I mean, I don't think this is rocket science. But Google tells us, one example would be a public official has a conflict if they, a family member or a business they own an interest in stands to benefit from a decision. How do we manage conflicts of interest? Well, number one, it should be disclosed in the very beginning. Secondly, recusal, you know, recusal should be next. Officials must withdraw from meetings, discussions, and voting on matters involving the conflict of interest. And then, thirdly, abstention. Refraining from participating in any formal action that would benefit a private interest is crucial. Here's what AI gave me when I tried to find the Fort Smith Code of Ethics. I don't know if this is right. You may be able to confirm this or deny it or correct me. Fort Smith Code of Ethics is reflected in the city's mission, which emphasizes honesty, integrity, and financial responsibility. On October 28th, Director Rigo, our esteemed Vice Mayor, made his highly anticipated return to social media and credited our FOIA request as the motivating factor for his return. So, to those who've been waiting on bated breath for this big day, you're welcome. Mr. Rigo had to return to social media for damage control. He began this effort to deflect his own failures by playing the victim and characterizing our efforts as, quote, bullying, quote, cooked-up conspiracies and keyboard warriors who manufacture outrage. I mean, I think we're familiar with each other's faces. At this point, we come to these meetings, I don't think, I just sit behind a keyboard. You know, so I think that's ridiculous. He then proceeded to characterize his brother-in-law's involvement as purely altruistic. Director Rigo's public reaction to the FOIA request hinted at what the FOIA would reveal. We did not receive the first round of documents until the following day, but he clearly knew the FOIA would bring truth to light. This FOIA request opened yet another embarrassing and shameful chapter in Fort Smith city governance. You should have formally disclosed your conflict of interest right out of the gate. Your position that you told anyone who asked is laughable. You should have recused yourself from meetings, discussions, and votes regarding this project involving your brother-in-law. We know you participated in at least one vote in the AMP Commission. In short, the FOIA documents refute all your denials. And I'll close by saying, this FOIA clearly showed Director Rigo behaving in a manner unaligned with the city's Code of Ethics. And he should be held accountable for doing so. Concerned citizens should be able to ask questions of their city leaders. We should be able to scrutinize their actions without fear of retribution or ridicule. We're going to continue to ask questions regardless of any mischaracterization on your part. Thank you.
And last, we have Crystal Caddeli.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. This evening, I want to address the ethical responsibility of our government officials. On Saturday, October 25th, I filed a FOIA request for details regarding the proposed sports complex and Mr. Barrett's involvement in it. While I had heard rumors suggesting a potential conflict of interest, I prefer to rely on evidence rather than hearsay. Given the city's current financial struggles, I found it puzzling why there would be such a strong push for this complex, particularly since it would compete with an already struggling convention center. Before I even received a response to my FOIA request, I noticed that Mr. Rigo had taken to several Facebook group pages to publicly challenge me in what seemed like an attempt to imitate, intimidate, or shame me for seeking public records. In his post, he claimed his brother-in-law was a volunteer trying to do something positive for the community. However, what he neglected to mention was that he was the one who introduced Mr. Barrett and to Ashley to advocate for the sports complex. Additionally, he participated in multiple conference calls alongside David, Ashley, the Synergy Group, and Huddle Up, and had direct conversations with other directors about the complex. Mr. Rigo claimed in his Facebook post that he would recuse himself from a vote concerning the sports complex. However, he sits on the AMP Commission board and was the one who initiated a motion to allocate $18,000 for a study on the sports complex. Fully aware that his brother-in-law had already been appointed as the general contractor, developer for the project and stood to gain financially if the board approved the complex. I think it's worth mentioning that Ashley provided numerous text messages exchanged between herself, David, and Mr. Rigo. Yet, Mr. Rigo did not submit any texts to the FOIA, not even those that we know he participated in. It's difficult to believe that there were no communications between Mr. Rigo and his brother-in-law regarding the sports complex. This raises even more serious questions regarding Mr. Rigo's ethical standards. It's time for our government officials to hold one another accountable. Fort Smith is in a dire financial state due to poor decision-making. We need strong leaders who are willing to make tough, principled choices that will benefit our community and not themselves or just a select few. I have to give kudos to Christina Katzavas because in that FOIA, there was an email where she did recuse herself from the AMP Commission and did not feel comfortable voting on anything because of the conflict of interest that she was aware of. So, we need, we need you guys, we know you have a hard job. I know you have hard decisions to make. But the one thing that we do need is ethics. Ethics are important. This is our money, not your money. And we need, there's a lot of things that need to be corrected in the city. And so, I'm asking you guys to do this moving forward. And I feel like that there does need to be some investigation on how this was handled. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, anyone else?
That's it.
All right, we will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?